All right. Uh, go ahead and call the regular meeting of this Bristol, Virginia City Council for May 23rd, 2017 to order. If you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor's minute and council comments. Again, a couple of announcements. As I mentioned earlier, the public hearing regarding the fiscal year 18 budget will be held next Tuesday, May 30th, 2017, at 6:00 PM at Virginia High School in the auditorium. Also, the regularly scheduled city council meeting for June 30th, 2017, and that's also the meeting at which we are scheduled to have the first reading of the budget ordinance that will also be moved, and it will be held at the Bristol, Virginia Public School Office Building at 220 Lee Street, and that's due to the primary elections that day, in this being a polling place. So, again, the next two meetings, the next week on the 30th, will, public hearing for the budget will be at the high school, and the regular city council meeting for June 13th will be at the school board office building. In addition, I would like to thank, mention this award that the city received, the police, and it says, "Presented to the city of Bristol, Virginia, in recognition of your hard work for achieving zero traffic deaths in 2016 and your dedication and commitment to saving lives." 2017 Virginia Highway Safety Summit. Nice, Virginia, '016. Appreciate the police and everyone who keep our roads safe, and the fact that we had no traffic deaths in the city in 2016, that is a good thing to celebrate. And the final comment I'll make is, last week, last Tuesday, the Historic District Preservation Award Committee had their fourth annual award ceremony at the library. We were busy that night with a budget work session, but they awarded awards to the following properties, from the Euclid Avenue Historic District, Tom and Carol in Hanlon, from the Solar Hill Historic District, Florence and Carol Francosi, the stewardship award to Robert and Joyce Rogers, the Bristol Downtown Commercial District to Karen Hester for Cranberry Lane. So, again, I appreciate everyone that submitted a property and those properties that received an award. So, anybody have any other comments before we get into the agenda? Okay. Regular agenda. Item one, consider a request to change the city's insurance carrier from the Virginia Municipal League Pool to the Virginia Association of Counties, VACOR. Ms. Crowder?
Thank you, Mayor. As I mentioned during the initial budget presentation on April 25th, we have priced our current property liability and workers' compensation insurance against the Virginia Association of Counties, and we have found that a comparable coverage through VACOR, is what that organization is known as, will save the city in comparison to this year $291,000, and it's over $300,000 compared to the initial quote we received for next fiscal year. Both myself, the city attorney, CFO, and HR director have all reviewed the information, and we are recommending that you all allow us to switch the property liability and workers' compensation insurance for the city to VACOR.
Okay. I don't think anybody signed up for this item, but is there any public comment? Okay. Have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we allow city manager to effectively, effectively change from the Virginia Municipal League for liability insurance to, to the Virginia Association of Counties.
Okay. Motion by Vice Mayor Hubbard. We have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Wingard. Any council discussion?
Yeah, I want to ask the city manager to put it on the record, what municipalities and counties around us are also using VACOR?
There are several of the counties around us. I know Washington County is a member. Abington has recently switched, or plans to switch with the next fiscal year as well. We did look, we talked to some cities because we were concerned with the city coverage. Martinsville switched a few years ago, they've been very pleased, and Lynchburg has been a member for several years.
Any changes in any of the coverage or premiums or anything related to liability?
No, we've, we've priced a comparable policy to what we have now.
Okay. Any, any more discussion? All right. Hearing enough of the discussion, clerk, please call her on.
Flainer.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
All right. Item number two, consider an agreement for the execution of a home investment partnerships program. And I believe that's, Ms. Calhoun?
So, the city is currently a member of consortium for the home program. Also included in that are Johnson City, Kingsport, Bristol, Tennessee, Washington, and Sullivan Counties, and Bluff City. Being a member of this consortium allows the city to receive funding to do major rehabilitation of homes and also homebuyer assistance. This agreement is due to be renewed so the city can continue as a member of the consortium.
I would, I would just add, if I may, that it allows us to receive federal funding, and there is no local match required.
All right. No one signed up, but do we have any public comment? All right. Have obtained a motion?
I make a motion, we join the partnership.
Okay. We have a motion. Councilman Mumpower, second?
Second.
Second, Vice Mayor Hubbard. Any discussion? All right. No discussion, then clerk, please call her on.
Flainer.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Yes. All right. Item number three, public hearing regarding amendments to the 2000, or to the CD, Community Development Block Grant 2015 through 2019 consolidation plan, and 2016, 2017 annual action plan. And at this time, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing, and we'll have the staff report. Ms. Calhoun?
Every five, five years, the city must submit a consolidated plan to HUD, which outlines the goals and objectives for the next five years for the city's funding process. They also must submit an annual action plan yearly to specifically outline how funds will be spent. A need for rehabilitating rental units in the city has been identified, and a proposed program includes both code enforcement and rental rehabilitation. In order to carry out this activity, the city must make amendments to past plans to include goals for such an activity, and also reprogram unspent funding to meet this need. So, these would be from projects, for example, a wayfinding project which was funded with other grant funds, so none of the, the funding has been spent, and that's available, and also a proposed park expansion, which after citizen input was identified, that further or greater use of money would be for addressing slum and blight in a target area of the Virginia Hills neighborhood, which is where this rental rehabilitation program is proposed.
Again, no one signed in to the comment sheet for the public hearing, but if anyone would like to make a comment, they're more than welcome to. All right. There being no public comment, I will declare the public hearing closed. Move to item number four, which is to consider the amendments to the CDGB, CDBG, excuse me, 2015, 2019 Consolidated Plan, and the 2016, 2017 Annual Action Plan. And that's the items that Ms. Calhoun just described to you, and, and we had the public hearing, although no comments about. So, at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Moves to, that we amend the CDBG 2015 to 2019 Consolidated Plan, and the 216 to 17 Annual Action Plan.
Okay. Have a motion by Vice Mayor Hubbard? Do we have a second?
Well, I'll second the motion, but I want to get into the discussion of it.
Okay. Well, we'll second the motion, and maybe we can reconsider after discussion, so. Okay. So, we have a motion, we have a second by Councilman Wingard. So, now, you want to lead the discussion?
Yes. I'm going to recommend that we table this and talk about this further, because this has some, I feel like, some unintended consequences that we could end up having a negative impact on the community. So, I'm going to recommend that we table this.
I agree. I was, if you weren't going to say it, as I say, we need to table this for a couple reasons. One, I think the neighborhoods that have been affected by this over the previous years need to have clearly direct input into what this means, because this can have a negative effect, depending on how it's applied. So, you got neighborhoods that have properties that need to be revamped, some of those properties are privately owned by landlords. So, one of the questions is, do you use community block grant to help a landlord that should be doing it himself anyway, or herself, to keep that property? That's not right, in my opinion. You don't support that. But then you have also properties where someone's living, they're below the poverty level, they can't afford to keep the house up to date, you should support that. So, that's why it's got to be a pretty focused plan on how this is done, and, and I think the funds have to be very much earmarked towards specific types of properties to do it right, because we don't want to add to the issue we've got in the city, we want to improve it. So, this could be one way you approve it, if, if it's done right. And so, that's why it does need to be tabled, there's more discussion here to make sure we do this right, because it can't have negative consequences if you just go get the grant money and you let it flow. So, and I don't think that's a good thing to do at all, so.
We might need to even consider forming a committee, a board, to, to look at this and make suggestions and recommendations as to, you know, how are we going to approach this? Because when you start talking code enforcement and different things of that nature, we really need to take our time on this one and not rush this through.
I just asked, maybe you can answer, Ms. Calhoun. My understanding is, this is, every year we get an allocation from HUD, and the, the money has to go to improve lower, moderate income areas of town, so that it, it doesn't necessarily have to be one particular part of town, or I think it can even go to individuals in what Mr. Mumpower was saying in terms of-
That's correct.
-renovating their homes, but the HUD gives us this allocation of money, and this is money from previous years that for one reason or another, we are, haven't spent, or haven't spent, as we described, so we're asking to reallocate that to different priorities.
Correct.
And is there a timeline on that, that we have to reallocate that money, or else maybe we would lose it back to HUD?
We do have a timeliness test that occurs every year at the beginning of May, on May 2nd, and at that point, we have to spend less than 1.5 times our annual allocation. So, since we don't yet know what our annual allocation is this year, we can't say for sure what that amount will be. But, yes, that funding does need to be reprogrammed in the next several months, whether it's to this program or another priority that's identified.
Again, just so council understands that, you know, I think we could discuss it, and there are a lot of, if not these uses, I think there are some legitimate, good uses throughout the city that you-
Oh, absolutely.
...would benefit low and moderate income individuals and neighborhoods, but, so, would you be willing to withdraw your motion?
Yeah, I'll amend my motion that, that we table the issue.
Okay. So-
And I'll second that.
Okay. So, we have Vice Mayor Hubbard amending the motion, to, to make it a motion to table, and Councilman Wingard seconding that motion. Any more discussion? All right. So, we'll vote on the amended motion, which is a motion to table. Clerk, call her on.
Flainer.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes. Okay. Now, we move to item number five, which is a public hearing regarding the fiscal year 1718 Community Development and Block Grant, CDBG, and Home allocations. And at this point, I will declare the public hearing open, and turn it over to Ms. Calhoun for the staff report.
Okay. So, the city does, as I said, annually receive funds from HUD to be primarily used to meet the needs of low and moderate income individuals. At this time, HUD has not provided the city's annual allocation for the Community Development Block Grant or the home program. However, we have been advised to move forward with the development of this annual action plan, and the city has identified the following as possible projects for inclusion in its annual action plan. Sidewalk improvements, homeowner rehab, removal of unsafe structures, and a housing maintenance partnership program. In addition, the city is considering six applications for public service activities. The total amount dedicated to these activities cannot exceed 15% of the city's annual allocation. The applications include the Bristol Public Library for the Jones Center Adult Learning, Crossroads Medical Mission for a mobile medical clinic, People Incorporated for a court-appointed special advocate program, Holland's Community Services Children's Advocacy Center for forensic interviewing of child, child abuse victims, and People Incorporated for the King's Mountain Permanent Supportive Housing, and Family Promise of Bristol for intensive case management.
Okay. Okay. At this time, we'll have the public comment, and as I call people that signed up and come up, again, you'll see, if you state your name, and, and in this case, your agency or your address, but I will remind people to, trying to limit their comments to three minutes, and you'll see the series of lights up there to try to move this along. First on the list is Ms. Cindy Rocket from Crossroads Medical Mission.
I'm Cindy Rocket with Crossroads Medical Mission, and I know that you already know who we are, that we're a faith-based mobile medical clinic, and that we provide free primary care services to folks in Bristol. We do not charge for our services, and we attempt to target people who are uninsured, low-income. Imagine, if you can, if you were a single mother who had just left another state, moved to Bristol, Virginia, and suddenly found that you could not get your medications, your health care, your children needed to be seen for an exam in order to start school, and none of that could happen unless you found Crossroads Medical Mission, and that's the kind of circumstance that we're able to help on a daily basis. So, if you imagine small circumstances like that, times 500, that's what we hope to provide in Bristol, Virginia, in this next year. So, if community development block grant funds are received by the city of Bristol, we hope that you will please consider level funding for Crossroads Medical Mission, and we thank you so much for supporting us in the past.
Thank you, Ms. Rocket. Next on the list, Dawn Figares from Family Promise of Bristol.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, and city staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight on behalf of Family Promise of Bristol, addressing the CDBG grant monies that you have. As I said, my name's Dawn Figares, I'm the Vice President of the Board of Directors for Family Promise of Bristol. I have also with me tonight Candy Blair, our Executive Director, and Lynn Fennell, who's the President of the Board of Directors. So, if you have any questions that I can't answer, perhaps one of my colleagues can do so as well. Just a bit of information for you about Family Promise of Bristol. We are a 501(c)(3) organization that was founded in 2011. We were founded in direct response to the results of a community assessment, a community needs assessment that was conducted by United Way of Bristol, that found homelessness to be the number one problem facing our area, especially homeless families with children. Two facts I'd like to share with you tonight that you may already be aware of, but some of the members of our audience may not. As of Friday, this past Friday, May 19th, in Bristol, Virginia, public schools, there were 92 schoolchildren who were enrolled who had been identified as homeless on Friday. As of today, the last day of school over on the Tennessee side, they had 97 schoolchildren enrolled who were homeless. That brought for the year their total to 141 total different children who had been identified as homeless on the Bristol, Tennessee side. We expect to have numbers for the Virginia side in the next week. And keep in mind that those numbers only include the ones that have been identified as homeless by the school systems, and it also doesn't include their younger brothers and sisters who are not enrolled in school yet. Another fact I'd like to bring to your attention is a question that we sometimes get, why is Family Promise of Bristol needed? We have two good shelter programs here in town, Haven of Rest and Salvation Army, and they do fabulous work. The, the issue there is that they're designed for adults, they're not designed for families, they're not designed for children. If you were a single mother, and you had a 12-year-old boy with you, and you went into one of those shelters, you would go into the women's shelter, and your 12-year-old boy would be separated from you and moved into the men's shelter on his own. And Family Promise is dedicated to helping situations like that. We have a goal of keeping families together during the transitional period, and addressing the underlying issues that created the situation that the families are in at that time. Now, how do we do this? Especially, how do we do it on our shoestring budget? You'll see in the paperwork that you get, our annual budget's only about $110,000 a year to do all this. First, we do the immediate housing through a network of faith-based congregations in our area. Faith-based congregations have opened their doors, they bring families in a week at a time, and provide overnight accommodations, and all the food for the families for the entire week. This is run entirely by volunteers and funded solely by donations. The second part of our program is dedicated to identifying and correcting whatever the issue was that caused the family to be in that situation to begin with, and that is addressed with intensive case management services. And that is the program that we have requested funding for the CDBG grant money tonight. We have, I see my time is up, but I apologize for that, I'll just close by saying, we try to work with each individual family on an individual basis, find out what the reason is that they're in the situation, and provide them the skills to overcome that, so that they're able to be stably housed and families stay together. I'd be happy to answer any questions at any time, if you have any.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the list, Ms. Angie Grossclose from People Incorporated.
Thank you for your time here this evening. My name's Angie Grossclose, and I'm the Chief Operating Officer for People Incorporated of Virginia. People Incorporated has submitted funding applications for two of our programs through the city's CDBG funding for the upcoming year. First is a $10,000 request for our court-appointed special advocates program. CASA is a program of the 28th Judicial District that provides trained volunteers to be judicial advocates on behalf of neglected and/or abused children in the city of Bristol, as well as the counties of Washington and Smith. The overall mission of the program is to advocate in the best interest of abused and neglected children. People Incorporated took over operation of this program from the city of Bristol in 1998, and has been successfully operating the program since that time. The program began receiving CDBG funding from the city in 2009 to supplement the grant received from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services, which provides the majority of the funding required to effectively operate the program. This year, the program plans to serve 40 children in the city of Bristol who have been abused and/or neglected. Volunteers will work to ensure that while children are within the court's supervision, they are safe, and ultimately live in a safe and permanent home. While the $10,000 requested here is a small portion of the overall program budget of $116,000, it's an integral part of the overall funding plan for the continued effective operation of the CASA program. We have also applied for $15,000 for our King's Mountain Supportive Housing Program. This program provides a permanent supportive housing solution for men in the city of Bristol who are chronically homeless. The program includes housing in single-room occupancy units, along with ongoing case management and supportive services to increase self-sufficiency for these individuals. Residents may stay at the facility as long as necessary, but the case manager works with them to increase their self-sufficiency, so that many residents are able to move out into non-supportive housing. This year, the program plans to avoid homelessness and provide safe housing for 12 men, and to provide 500 hours of case management services to those individuals. The full program budget of $44,875 is funded in large part by a grant from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, but the $15,000 requested here is an essential part of the overall funding for the King's Mountain Supportive Housing Program. We'd like to thank you for your past support, and we appreciate your consideration of our requests.
Thank you, Ms. Grossclose. And next on the list, TJ Dewitt from the Jones Creativity Center at the Bristol Public Library.
Thank you. My name's TJ Dewitt, I work at the Bristol Public Library, Director of the Jones Creativity Center. The Jones Creativity Center provides job readiness training, digital and computer literacy, and adult basic education for the people of the Bristol area. Since its inception in 1987, the Jones Creativity Center has assisted thousands of Bristol area residents in meeting their goals of improving their lives and the lives of their families by assisting them to reach educational goals, pursue secondary education and vocational training, and obtain employment. CDBG funding uniquely enables the JCC to provide free, one-on-one walk-in instruction in these subjects of digital literacy, job readiness training, and adult basic education in a computer lab to anyone with these kinds of needs, six days a week, 46 hours total per week. In this past fiscal year so far, we've had 286 individuals applying for our services, and in this, we've had 156 searching for jobs, we've administered additional job readiness training to 14 individuals, we've helped 133 individuals with a basic computer and- We've helped 133 individuals with a basic computer instruction. And we know of, we've had reported to us 41 individuals who have obtained employment after coming to visit us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dewitt. That was everyone that had signed up for the public hearing, although if anyone else would like to speak, they're more than welcome. All right. With that being said, I will close the public hearing for the fiscal year 1718 Community Development and Block Grant, CDBG, and Home allocations. We will now move to item number six, Consider Formation of a Mayor Subcommittee to Review Applications for CDBG Monies.
So although HUD has not released our funding amounts, we do have 60 days upon hearing those amounts to complete our citizen participation process and submit an annual action plan to HUD. So I would recommend the formation of a subcommittee to consider the projects for this year's annual action plan.
Okay. Again, public comment, no one signed up. Has a comment. You know, at this time, as typically been in the past, it's been two members of council that serve on this committee. Given that we don't know when they will meet, I think, speaking to both Vice Mayor Hubbard and Councilman Wingard, who have a little more flexibility with their schedules, that could be able to meet in a more timely manner to make sure when we find this from HUD, and it's my understanding that both y'all would be willing to meet, I think it's only one actual meeting that you go through the allocations, so.
Okay.
With that being said, then, I guess, a motion to form that committee and have y'all serve on it.
Serve.
Second.
Have a motion by Vice Mayor Hubbard, a second by Councilman Mumpower. Any other discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Fleener.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Mayor, could I just add real quick?
Yes.
You know, tonight is Ms. Calhoun's last council meeting with us. She is leaving the area. We're very sad to see her go. She's done an excellent job managing this program for us the last several years, and so I just wanted to publicly commend her for that.
Thank you, Ms. Calhoun. We appreciate it.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. All right. Item number seven, Consider A Contract With Robinson Farmer Cox and Associates, P L L C, for Audit Services For The City Of Bristol, Virginia. I believe that's, Ms. Bradlin.
Thank you, Mayor Hartley.
Members of council, the city's contract for audit services ended with the completion of the June 30, 2016 audit. The city requested a proposal, I'm sorry, the city issued a request for proposal for audit services. The request for proposal was advertised in the Bristol, Virginia Herald Courier on April 16, 2017, and was listed on the Commonwealth of Virginia's procurement website. The city received five responses to the request for proposal. Three of the respondents were selected for interview. The committee was unanimous in selecting Robinson Farmer Cox Associates as the firm to provide audit services for the city of Bristol. This recommendation has been made to the city manager. The proposed contract will be for audit services for the city and related component units for the fiscal years ending June 30, 2017, 2018, 2019, with an optional two-year extension.
Again, is there, no one signed up, but is there any public comment? Have a, entertain a motion?
I presume this will save cities some money? Or at least get more expertise?
Yes, sir. The primary determining factor was experience with Virginia localities and the current budget amount for that line item. The request, I'm sorry, the proposal from Robinson Farmer Cox was less than the budget line item.
Okay. So they have several cities and towns and whatever throughout Virginia?
Yes, yes. I'll be glad to give you examples if you'd like.
Who was on the committee that made the recommendation?
The selection committee consisted of myself, the Chief Financial Officer, Pam Vannable, Senior Accountant, the Purchasing Agent, Dawn Quizamary, the Director of Finance for Bristol, Virginia Public Schools, Tammy Jones, and Melina Charles, who is the Administrative Services Manager for the Bristol City Department of Social Services.
And do you have any personal, direct experience with this audit firm? Whether it was directly for a municipality that you know of or ones you've known that used this firm?
Yes, they were the audit firm on record for a previous employer, not my last employer, but the employer before that, for several years.
And how'd they do?
They did a very good job.
So a couple comments.
Would that be during the discussion portion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
After motion?
Yes, sir.
We need a motion first and a second. I'll make the motion that we have our auditing services done by Robinson Farmer Cox and Associates.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hubbard. I'll second that. Have a motion and a second now. Discussion.
But what I want to say is, one thing I think's important, there's been a lot of optics on the city finances of where we've been and where we're going. So I think one recommendation is, this audit is a basic audit. So this is the normal, basic financial audit that the city has to do to comply with Virginia law. But the CFO should think about with the city manager and come forward with, in my opinion, two separate engagement letters that go out for public auditing to do a IDA audit, a direct IDA audit, and an internal control audit. And with everything that's happened with BBU over the last few years, we may not find anything, but we've had several discussions up here, you know, about, it's always good to take a harder look. And we all know that these audits, the normal audits, don't get into that kind of a detail. So the scope of the engagement has to be very specific of the detail you want them to go into. So we want to make sure as a council and as a city, we're not, you know, seeing anything that's out there that we need to be concerned about. So we don't need to take action right now, but I think that needs to be tied into the next few council meetings that we issue a separate engagement letter to do that, which means we'd have to, we'd have to be ready to budget some amount of money for that. But I think it's money well spent because the last thing we need is to wake up and find we got a financial issue that we're not aware of.
If I could just mention, the IDA is considered a component unit of the city of Bristol. So in the RFP that was sent out, that was included. So a financial statement audit of the IDA is included in these services.
Well, I think I'm talking about more than a financial statement audit. You know, they, when they do a financial statement audit, they do spot checks on all the ins and outs of the finances. I'm talking about a much deeper dive into contracts and transactional decisions and things that have been made over some time periods. That's why we got to find the scope and make them, you know, pick and test certain specific contracts that we know had a lot of dollars tied to them and see, and see what they find as far as were those contracts clean, were they handled properly, was the money transacted and accounted for properly, and, you know, just basic good accounting, right? And we all hope we don't find anything, but we all know that there's suspicion out there that things have happened that maybe we don't know about, but we need to know. And now is the time to do that. So we got to be smart about what we pick. You know, we got to be smart about the scope. What's important is the scope you're writing under. And so we'll have to just talk about that in the next meeting or two, where you put a proposal together, the scope you think it needs to be, right? To check into things that you're already seeing that you may have concerns or you want to understand in more detail, so.
Would those items still fall under the RFP, or would that change the?
I think it's a new RFP.
It's a new RFP.
That's what I, I mean, that's what you were sounding.
Would make sense for that one who's doing the math, the overall audit, additional fee for the debt.
We should have done this six, seven months ago. We talked about it, we talked about it. And realistically, we can still look into the state coming in and auditing. I think we're gonna, you know, I'm hoping, like Mr. Mumpower says, there's nothing there, but there's been a lot of, a lot of things that happened back a few years ago that we need to really take an in-depth look at. And I don't think the citizens of this city are going to be satisfied, especially looking at the situation we're in tonight particularly.
Well, we're gonna have to agree on a timeline. How far are we going back?
We're going back to at least the files, in my opinion. And when they RFP'd the files and so forth and so on, and contracted, et cetera, et cetera. So we're looking at, I don't know when that happened, that decision, 2011, '12?
'12.
Okay. I think we need to at least go at least before that. We need to look in, an auditor needs to come in here, and accountant needs to come in here, and they need to look and see if the RFPs were followed, procedures according to state law were followed, and so forth and so on. If not, why not?
That really shouldn't take that long. There's not that many transactions.
There's a lot of transactions, I think. And I still want our council, now we're hoping about four or five months, to look at the bond issues that's still sitting upstairs and hasn't been looked at. And maybe you need to get a committee to help you with that, but that, the bond issues realistically need to be looked at, Mr. Eats.
Well, we've talked about that on numerous occasions, and as soon as, I think the past month, we've been tied up with budget things, and I think the second week of June, I've got marked off for, for that.
Good. Because that are, the bond issues, in case public hasn't looked at them, I can tell this much, the bond issues sent to the people that bought the bonds, specifically, say, Calhoun's and Smoky Mountain Brewery, that's up there. And that's sent out to our bond people that bought the revenue bonds and the GO bonds. And there's something really wrong with that picture. And maybe there's a way we can recover some money, and we don't have to be sitting here looking at the situation we're in for the people.
And I think the other comment was, the CFO, I'm sure she'll do this, but needs to be mindful that, you know, if you bog down the current auditor that's doing the current audit with a more detailed audit, because she's got a specific timeline she has to meet, and so she can't take a chance of that. So it, it may not need to be this firm because of that.
Well, let's say we want it done the next six months, minimum.
That's right.
Well, there's no audit going on for the city at that time. They're just coming in looking at old records.
Yeah, at least between now and October, right? Between now, between July 1st and October 1st or something, that we go out, RFP it and get it done, and get a report submitted.
Can we do that for the next meeting? Have it on the agenda for the next meeting? Set that now, that we go ahead and discuss that and have a vote on it, because that's not part of the vote tonight, obviously.
No, it's just consensus.
I mean, if that's what we want to do, I think one of the things we probably need to do is budget. At some point, budget for it, put it in the budget, and by including it in the budget, I would think that would give then the city manager the authority to, it's a budgeted item, she, you know, to implement that, would go through the RFP process just like she did with this. It's budgeted for the audit service. They went through the process and then brought it back to us to make the, approve the, entering into the agreement.
Maybe Mr. Eats and perhaps CFO can approach our legislators, you know, and see if they can do something. Realistically, they did it at BBU, the State Board of Auditors, or whatever you call it, came in, didn't cost BBU a penny. And they came out and came in and spent a good time with it. Found a lot of discrepancies, a lot of issues. Certainly be a lot easier on the taxpayers of the city of Bristol if perhaps the CFO in combination with the city manager and our city attorney could approach whatever we have to do with the state mechanism to get the state to come in here and do it without us having to RFP it and pay it out of our pocket.
I believe, in my opinion, that is, we would have to show some kind of misuse of the funds for them to bring the state in.
All they got to do is show them the bond issue.
I believe we're going to need to move forward with an audit and see what the audit shows.
What can we do, both? Can we, we see if we can't broach them with the, if Mr. Eats will go in and look, and finally in the next two weeks or whatever, and look at the bond issues, I think that'll be enough to spur interest and so forth from the state. Okay? Period. And if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but I, that, to me, stood out like a sore thumb, and people that bought these bonds thought Calhoun's and Smoky Mountain Brewery coming, and they said they had contracts, that's in the bond issues. So that ought to be enough to spur. And the property was purchased for $23 million without an appraisal, without any negotiations. I mean, you know, realistically, I mean, you know, I think that's enough, Mr. Wingard, maybe I'm completely wrong, to spur a little interest.
Well, I agree with you, but I don't think the state will.
Well, I think we can go about it two ways. One, we can go ahead and start preparing an RFP. Two, we can go ahead and contact the state, and if the state can do it, so be it. We don't worry about the RFP. And if the state can't do it, then we.
Agreed.
And we just approach it from two different angles and see which ones will be the cheapest for the city.
I agree. Okay, makes sense.
So getting back, we had.
Fire this new auditing firm motion.
Any more discussion? I think you made the motion.
Yeah.
Mr. Hubbard, you?
Is he second, or is he second?
He's second.
I think I'm second.
It's been so long ago.
Yeah.
I need to start making notes on that. Okay, so we do have a motion by Vice Mayor Hubbard, a second by Councilman Wingard. So no further discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Fleener.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes. All right. Item number eight, Consider Approval Of The Minutes Of The Regular Meeting From April 25, 2017, The Called Meeting From May 1, 2017, The Called Meeting From May 2, 2017, and The Called Meeting From May 4, 2017. I have a motion to approve all those minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Clerk, call the roll.
Fleener.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes. All right. Item number nine, Presentation By The International Association Of Firefighters. Mr. Watts?
Members of council, Mayor Hartley, Vice Mayor Hubbard, Mr. Wingard, Mr. Fleener, Mr. Mumpower, thank you for allowing us to, the opportunity to present to you tonight. I told you a few months ago that we were going to get you the statistical data and the information that you were asking for. So with being that said, I just want to say first off, thanks be to God for being here and giving me the breath and the ability to do this. This is not my normal job, of course, protecting the citizens is. And I just want to say to each and every one of you all, we have been having prayer vigils, and we're praying for you all, each by name, in your family.
Thank you.
So I just want to say that whatever the outcome of this is, we hope it's going to be in the citizens' favor and for our favor. So with that being said, we have some information from the international and from the state. And I just want to say that I am very thankful to be the president of this local, to represent my guys and gals, whether they're in my association or they're not. I am here for every firefighter that's in Bristol, Virginia, male, female, and I am here for the citizens of Bristol, Virginia. And we do our community a great service, and we are going to continue to do our community a great service. So I have some information that hasn't been given to you about some regional numbers, Mr. Mumpower, if that's what you would like to see. I have someone that can talk on that. I'd also like to say that GIS information that Mr. Miller sent out a couple meetings ago, this is going to be greatly impacted. The GIS information that Mr. Miller presented to you all, if you all shut down a fire station, his information, and I'll let him describe that if you all want to hear from him, but it will be greatly impacted, the GIS information that he has been doing on his own for a year and a half. So with that, I would like to introduce Mr. Robert Bragg. He is our state association president, and he represents 7,000 members across the Commonwealth of Virginia. So, I'll introduce Robert Bragg.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mike. And thank you, council, for giving me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. As Mike just stated, I represent over 7,000 members in 58 localities across the Commonwealth. Tonight, you're going to be presented with industry-driven statistical data that's been specifically looked at in the Bristol situation. And Fourth District IFF Vice President Andy Pentelis will be due in the presentation. I just ask that you look at the data with an open mind. It's, again, it's industry-driven. There's no emotion in this data whatsoever. So with that, I introduce Andy Pentelis.
Thank you very much, President Bragg. And thank you, members of council, Mayor Hartley, Vice Mayor Hubbard, Councilman Fleener, Councilman Mumpower, Councilman Wingard. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to present before you this. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to present before you this evening. My name is Andrew, Andrew Pantellus. I'm the Vice President of the International Association of Firefighters, representing the 30-plus thousand professional firefighters and EMS workers from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, Virginia, West Virginia, Maryland, Delaware, and the District of Columbia. I also concurrently serve as a battalion chief in the Prince George's County Fire and EMS Department, one of the largest combination career and volunteer departments in the entire world. So, we'll have an opportunity to discuss and answer some questions that council has asked in previous sessions. We'd really like to present you with two pieces of information that have already been distributed to you via email, and one is an executive summary of the Bristol Fire Department, and the second is a GIS study that was presented to you yesterday evening. And our goal is to present you with these research-based documents, so that you can make the most informed decisions possible and data-driven decisions. For the purposes of brevity, I have broken our presentation into four components. The first is the measurement of firefighters per 1,000 residents. The second is a discussion regarding the utilization of volunteer firefighters. The third is why it is important to have a minimum number of firefighters on a typical fire ground, and fourth is the impact of the proposed fire department reductions for the city of Bristol. On the first item, I've had the opportunity to observe previous council budget sessions, and one item that has come up is the number of firefighters per thousand ratio. And I know Councilmember Mumpower spent a great deal of time and effort researching on his own and digging into an NFPA document by the National Fire Protection Association, which is the fourth needs assessment of the United States Fire Service. This was published in November of 2016, has been most recently made public, and is most current statistical data that's published by the National Fire Protection Association. This was co-authored by a group of industry experts from across the fire service, and two of those co-authors are, one, my current fire chief in Prince George's County, and two, our head research analyst at the International Association of Firefighters, Dr. Lori Moore. So, while I did not have the opportunity to participate as a co-author, I'm well-versed in the document, and I could speak on various components. The document that is currently being referenced reflects averages of apparatus and station rates per 1,000 people by population protected, which has been reported to the NFPA. We have indicated that it is a survey document. It's statistically significant. A significant number of United States Fire and EMS departments respond to this document from all various classifications of population. Although the measure of firefighters per capita may have some value when comparing communities, it does not have a value in relation to addressing risk in a community or establishing staffing levels. Firefighters per capita is a means of quantifying and not qualifying staffing levels. For example, if a city of 1,000 citizens has one police officer, but 50 of those citizens are criminals, it goes without saying that there are not enough police in the city to manage this, this, these criminals. Frankly, the determination of the number of required human and capital resources for public safety agencies should be based on a comprehensive assessment of risk, system demand, system performance, and an understanding of the job tasks and how they are to be performed. Unfortunately, such ratios are given without regard to local factors such as population density, the age and conditions of the buildings in the community, and various other local characteristics that influence risk. Statistics such as these presented in the study reveal a wide variation across and within the various population clusters per thousand that are presented. Unfortunately, a valid and reliable, one-size-fits-all rule of thumb for prescribing the appropriate level of department staffing simply does not exist, because this document is a survey. While it could be used as a survey and as a management tool, it is exclusively one tool in the toolbox. Many of those other metrics need to be utilized when evaluating the proper fire department staffing and deployment. And although the use of staffing is tempting for its simplicity, a better approach to decisions about the appropriate numbers of firefighters in your community would take into account staffing for each piece of fire apparatus, and a realistic assessment of the availability of firefighters to respond to one or multiple emergencies. The second issue that council has raised in multiple discussions are inquiries about volunteer firefighters, and how Bristol could possibly utilize or capitalize on including, including volunteer firefighters into their ranks. Coming from a combination department, originally starting as a volunteer firefighter, and having 20 years' experience as a career firefighter in Prince George's County, I know firsthand the challenges of not only working in, but maintaining a combination department consisting of career and volunteer members. Interestingly enough, most of the United States population is protected by career firefighters. However, most of the US fire departments, departments, are volunteer departments. That nearly shows us that 50% of the entire US population is protected by an all-career fire department, 29% is protected by a combination of career and volunteer members on some varying scale, and approximately 21% are protected by all volunteer fire departments. Community size is an important factor in the United States Fire Service, not only in terms of the emphasis on career versus volunteer firefighters, but also in terms of the challenges faced by departments in different settings. However, it is possible to exaggerate those differences. Even a rural community can have a large factory complex, a large stadium, or even a high-rise building that will impact the needs of the community to provide various staffing levels, and those complexities exist right here in Bristol. Volunteer fire departments unfortunately have been reporting growing difficulty in recruiting and retaining volunteers. The US has increased the diversity of responsibilities that the fire departments exist, and what we're responsible to provide service from an all-hazard standpoint. From fires to other hazards, suppression or prevention, there's been a corresponding growth in the needed skills and hours, simply time that volunteers do not have the opportunity or the availability to provide. Increasing training demand, the need to have two jobs, members of the community that are moving out of the community, as you've discussed in previous council members, a decline in population right here in the city of Bristol over the last several years. This is a real threat, and we see this nationally, and we see it in my home jurisdiction, so I could speak to that decline of volunteer participation. One very important factor that the report also described, it does not focus on transitioning from a career department to a volunteer department, because it simply just doesn't happen anywhere. The report does focus on the gradual decline in transition from volunteer departments to combination departments, and combination departments to all career departments. That number's only projected to increase, as volunteer fire departments have been reporting growing difficulty in recruiting and retaining volunteer firefighters. And please don't take that as a knock on our volunteer firefighters, or on the volunteer fire service, because simply it's just a reality of the demand of the job, the time constraints of the job, and the challenges of a volunteer fire department recruiting and retaining members. Switching over to some of the local questions and issues on items three and four. Until this point, council has been provided with a very broad and generalized information about survey results, industry standards, and comparable data to surrounding municipalities in southwestern Virginia and northeastern Tennessee. Our goal is to present council with an analysis of current response capabilities in Bristol, and to illustrate the impact of the various scenarios that have been discussed, specifically, a reduction in force and a closure of Fire Station 1. We present this information to you so that you may make the most informed decision possible. It is also our opinion that you haven't been provided an answer to the question that you have raised on several occasions, as to why the Bristol Fire Department needs and has the number of firefighters that are currently employed by the department. If it pleases the council, I request that you turn to page 17 in the GIS analysis that we have provided to you, and that is also up on the screen. Thank you. Figure number four on page 17 illustrates a typical fire ground operation. This is what we would refer to as our bread and butter, single-family home house fire, and the number of personnel that are required to assemble on the scene. And there are a number of tasks that need to be performed on a fire ground that are imperative to successful mitigation of an incident, but for simplicity and for brevity, I would like to focus on four. Currently in figure four, you'll notice that there is an attack hose company. That attack hose company is responsible for simply putting the red, wet stuff on the red stuff, for extinguishing the fire. Next to them, you'll see a backup hose company, and that backup hose company exists exclusively in the event that there's a failure of your primary hose line. You'll also notice that there are a number of other tasks that are being performed, three that are imperative for fire ground operations. On the bottom-left corner, you'll notice a rescue team, what we call an IRIC team. This team is designated to rescue firefighters who become trapped or distressed themselves. This is an OSHA regulation, so it's not a recommendation, it's not a, it's not a consensus standard like some of the National Fire Protection Association documents. This is a regulation. This is law. So, when we have two firefighters going into a burning building, we must have those two firefighters on the outside, having the ability to effect rescue. The other two tasks that are being conducted, number one, search and rescue. Life over property, that's why we are here as a fire service. We're here to search for and rescue trapped occupants. A team of a minimum of two personnel, preferably on a ladder company or an alternative piece performing ladder duties, is responsible for that search and rescue. And finally, you'll see climbing the ladder onto a roof of ventilation team. And the goal of that ventilation team, the job of that ventilation team, is to take heat, to take hot toxic gases, remove it from the fire, so that it increases the likelihood and the survivability rate for trapped occupants, but it also allows our engine crews to go further, deeper into burning buildings, so that they could distinguish the fire at the seat and affect rescue when people are trapped. I know the illustration is simplistic, but this is what is required for just a basic house fire. For what's being proposed currently in the Bristol Fire Department, there are three companies, each having a, a number of three firefighters responding on each company to a standard house fire. If the proposals that have been discussed are actually approved, and the fire department must make the necessary cuts and remove a company, that's going to reduce our fire department response to two companies of three personnel responding to this same situation. What that will mean is your first company will be able to initiate extinguishment with a hose line. Your second company will perform your two-out, which will be your required by OSHA standard as a rescue team, but other critical fire ground tasks are not being performed exclusively by the city of Bristol Fire Department. That means there are no other units from Bristol that are available to search for trapped occupants. There are no other units from Bristol that are available to ventilate and remove those hot gases and those toxic fumes away from the firefighters, out of the structure, so we have a higher likelihood of successful rescue. On the fire ground tasks, there are many research documents that you have had an opportunity to review, from the National Fire Protection Association to other industry documents, but I like to use broad references. I like to not just focus on one exclusive reference. And I know that many council bodies such as yourself often like to refer to ICMA, the International City Management Association, for reference documents on properly managing your respective municipalities. And the ICMA Managing Fire Services book, it states if about 16 trained firefighters are not operating at the scene of a working fire within the critical time period, then dollar loss and injuries are significantly increased as this fire spread. Using the current deployment model, Bristol is already relying on mutual aid from Bristol, Tennessee, to accomplish these critical fire ground tasks. As you'll see in figure four, you are relying on mutual aid and a mutual aid agreement from Bristol and the surrounding communities to fill out your basic fire ground responsibilities. This is a practice that is not recommended in the industry, because this variable is out of your control. Not only is it unwise to rely on the availability of mutual aid response, but it is something that can be taken away when one party feels that their resources are being abused, or that the frequency of that mutual aid is not reciprocal. To further reduce your response capabilities will be inherently dangerous for the citizens of this community and for the firefighters who are sworn to protect it. Finally, I would like to describe to you the GIS maps that have been prepared for Bristol in the GIS study, and if you would please turn to page 35 in your document for the first map. I believe that'll come up on the screen. Great, thank you very much. The first map provides a geographic overview of your response area in the city of Bristol and the station locations that exist. Turning to page 36, map number two on page 36 highlights the concentration of emergency response incidents here in the city of Bristol from 2014 in January until December of 2016, over a three-year span. As you can see, the largest demand on fire department resources is located immediately downtown around Fire Station 1. On map number three on page 37, this highlights the percentage of streets currently that the city of Bristol Fire Department can meet the four-minute response capability that's outlined in NFPA 1710. This requires that the first engine company should arrive on the scene of a fire suppression incident or emergency medical incident as the first responder in four minutes or less of travel time 90% of the time. So, the map above depicts the percentage of area roads that can be covered, assuming that all apparatus are in the station, that they are staffed and ready for response at the time of dispatch. Currently, the department may provide coverage to 47% of all city roads within the four-minute response capability that's outlined in NFPA 1710. As such, in the other 53%, the first arriving firefighters on the scene of a structure fire or another IDLH immediately dangerous to life and health environment must wait until additional resources arrive on the scene. Thank you for bearing with me, I'm almost through, so I thank you for your time. On map number four, the emergency two-in, two-out capabilities, the one that we discussed, the regulation that's established by OSHA that was discussed, within four minutes of assembling four firefighters currently, this map will show you that OSHA regulations that require minimum of four firefighters, with two operating on the interior and two operating on the exterior, and despite covering 47% of all city roads, the department can only assemble four firefighters in four minutes or less of travel time on 7.2% of city roads. The four-minute response concentration on map number five, page 39, for emergency response to incidents from 2014 through 2016, as can be seen, Station 1 and Station 2 are both within and in close proximity to the densest concentration of emergency incidents and calls for service. And eliminating any of these stations would result in longer response times, unbalanced increases in demand on individual units or both. And as depicted in map four, the department only already has a small percentage of roads where four firefighters can be assembled in four minutes or less. On map number six, what we've provided for you, because this has been the station that has been discussed by council and by Chief Armstrong, the proposal to potentially close Fire Station number one. On map number six, the above map depicts the percentage of area roads that can be responded to in four minutes or less of travel time, assuming that all apparatus are staffed and in station at the time of alarm. As can be seen, the department will only be able to respond to 34.7% of all city roads, which represents a reduction of 26.2%. And finally, one of the most concerning illustrations on map number seven, the emergency two-in, two-out capabilities that would be reduced with the fire, with the closure of Fire Station number one. As can be seen, with Station 1 closed, the department is unable to assemble a minimum of four firefighters in four minutes at all. This represents a 100% reduction in the percentage of roads where a minimum of four firefighters can assemble to begin an initial attack on a fire or operate in another IDLH environment. another IDLH environment. Our final map, on map number eight, shows the four-minute response concentration of emergency incidents, two thousand and fourteen to sixteen if they occurred, with Station One closed. And if Station One were closed, apparatus from Stations Two and Three would have to travel further to render assistance to each other, and as apparatus response time increases, risk of fire-related injury, death, and economic loss all increase as well. So again, we would like to thank the council for giving us the opportunity to present additional information regarding service delivery for the Bristol Fire Department. You gentlemen have the toughest job at the moment. That is to balance the needs of this community against the resources that you have available. We understand that. We can't provide you with all the answers, nor will we suggest which resources and services are more important than others. However, it is our hope that you will utilize this information and reconsider the cuts that are being proposed to the fire department. We thank you all for your time and are more than happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Let me say first of all, Mr. Wise, you do dress up awful nice, buddy. I mean, really, 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 I mean, I mean, you know, we could have a prayer meeting here tonight, okay? You know, and I gotta, I gotta tell you, sir, you are a credit to your union, okay? You are. He is a huge credit to you. And this is more of a statement, this is a question for you all. I want you to understand, you know, when we talk about these things and we, we, these cuts, Bristol is facing some dire circumstances. And you know, when you come in here tonight and you see the people, I see your, a lot of your firemen, and they've got their families here tonight, their families.
And citizens.
Oh, there's a lot of citizens here, absolutely, I, I know that, and I, and I commend them for showing up, I wish they'd show up more often. But, you know, this personalizes it, it really does.
Cutting anybody isn't something that anybody here relishes. In two thousand and twenty, because of improper management that the city's been cursed with for thirty years, we have tremendous bond debt coming. The question is, do we cut now? And hopefully have a reserve? Or if we're really, if, if the falls doesn't work, then how many we cut? Not just firemen, police? I mean, I'm not gonna cut ten. I'm gonna tell my council brothers, I'm not gonna vote to cut ten. We're gonna have to cut. But there's no way, looking at you all, that I can vote to cut ten people. Can't do it. Won't do it. It's not for applause. It's not for applause. It's not for applause. It's not for acclaim. What I am gonna recommend, we have to get a surplus. I appreciate your prayers. Hope everybody here will pray for us. I, uh, I'm not gonna, I think we need to, I'll cut ten, we're gonna have to look for more money. I think that any chair, any organization we have that doesn't function for public safety in this city is on the chopping block. Period. And when I'm talking about that, I'm talking about the Convention and Business Bureau. See them back there. We don't need to give a hundred thousand dollars to someone for tourism. We need to give something for people that are gonna work, and here in our streets, and they're gonna work for our people. So that's where I am, and that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Well, I wanna follow up, 'cause I kind of, let me tell a story a little bit. You know, when I, when I got on city council, it was one of those things where, you know, you never know what you're getting into, once you sit down, you start looking at, you know, the situation organizations in. So went to the finance committee meeting, started seeing where the finances are. The closer I looked, the more I shook my head. It's like, you know, how, how, how is it possible that a city could mismanage itself that bad for that long? To where we're in a position now to where every decision we make is going to not only be a deep cut, but a hard cut and emotional cut. 'Cause I've done this before, I know. I went to the Southwest Virginia Emergency Services Department, got emotional about it. But you know, when I went there, I went there to get more information. I didn't go there to cry. I went there to make sure we're doing right. So listen, this is not about the fire department. We love you guys, we know you do a great job. I see you out in town. It's not what this is about, right? At all. So when I looked at these finances, I said, what in the world are we gonna do? 'Cause we don't know what's gonna happen tomorrow, but I know we gotta be ready for tomorrow. So if the financial situation of the economy turns further south and we don't do the right thing, we could be in deeper trouble. So the more I dug into it, got with the city manager, I said, you know what, this, this is really hard to unwind the complexity of what got us here. So the best thing I can suggest is we need every department head to get up here and present where their department is, right? And compare it to all the localities like us, so we could try to get a very honest comparison of what, what, what we look like compared to these other cities. So we picked some out there like us, Radford, Waynesboro, Staunton, Martinsville, places that are about our size, on the interstate, and every department head came up here, right? And we were here in here one Saturday, right? And that was the police and the fire, and lots of questions. So through that presentation, it wa, it was pretty obvious, when you looked at the numbers, there was something that I didn't understand and had to be explained. One, one thing was, what, you know, how is it that Radford, as an example, almost identical population to Bristol, has only thirteen career firefighters? And here we are, with forty-six in our budget, and we're exactly the same-sized city, right? Why is that? So that was just an open question, never got answered, right? Waynesboro, twenty-one to twenty-two thousand people, you know, they had, I think it was thirty-four firemen. So you start running the numbers, and it's like, you know, you know, that's, that's even really good, you know, thirty-four firemen, you start doing the per thousand, you know, it comes, it comes back to that NFPA report pretty closely. And so that's what created more questions, that's what's created more discussion, right? What, why is it that Bristol seems to be the only town we look at? So personally, I went out and I said, okay, I gotta look at more information. You know, I'm not getting what I need here. So I went out and I found an NFPA two thousand and fifteen Fire Department Profile Report, right? And I'm a numbers guy, right? I live, I live and die by numbers. One of the mottos, you know, the people work for me, I'll tell them, in God we trust, and all others bring data, right? 'Cause you gotta look at the data, 'cause you gotta make it non-emotional, you know, where are we? So I went and tried to find some information, so I found that report. And that's what I, that's what I told council that night, right? So when you looked at that report, one of the first things you saw in there, that this report said that, you know, we've been collecting this data across twenty-nine thousand fire departments, which immediately told me this is statistically valid, it's not just one or two fire departments, this is the entire country, you know, so it was statistically valid. And that data had been collected since nineteen eighty-six, not, you know, not just last year. So they had the information that went back thirty years. And they pointed out that the ratio of firemen to a thousand population hasn't changed much at all in that time period, right? It was like one point seven six back in the eighties, then it maybe went down to one point six nine, and it flushed it out, it went back up, and it stayed pretty constant. And the only year in that whole table was last year's report, which said one point five four. That was the lowest number for all those previous thirty years. So I wouldn't wanna use that one, I threw it aside, and that's when I said, that, that one's maybe an anomaly, so this is look at the average through, through those years, 'cause that's how we came back to, with us being a seventeen thousand, two hundred population, you know, you divide by a thousand, you know, what's that tell you? Firefighters per thousand, it came back to about twenty-eight to thirty firemen, right? 'Cause that's what the whole country's running at. So then I said, okay, we won't look at that report, let's go back and let me look at Cookeville, Tennessee, deeper, let me look at Kingsport a little harder, let me look at Jonathan City. So I did that to see is there, is there something there about Bristol that is different, right? That makes us need more firemen than in these other communities. And I've lived in most of those communities, been around, so I couldn't put my arms around anything, right? They're about the same age, they've got similar houses, you know, no, nobody, except for maybe Kingsport's, got this huge petrochemical, you know, Kodak Eastman, but the rest of them, you know, small college town communities, you know, there wasn't anything really that stood out to me that said, you know, we need forty-six and the others are getting away with something less. So I still came back to the same, you know, conclusion, why is it that we've got that many, right? So, so when the next meeting happened, there was a proposal that was made that we absorbed the fire, or we absorbed the lifesaving crew emergency services, right, into the fire department. And one of my first questions was, you know, can you really do that without increasing any staffing? And I, and I asked that for a reason. And the answer was, yes, we can do this without increasing staffing. So you know, the conclusion I drew immediately was, obviously, there's too many firemen. If they can take all that work on and, and not have to increase staffing, right? That it says the same thing I've been looking at. So, so then I, lifesaving crew came up, I said, well, how many staff members do you have? You know, I wanna know, you know, how, what do you do today that you're serving this community with lifesaving crew? You know, how many you have? So they told us. And I said, well, how many permanent is that? Because they had a lot of volunteers and a lot of part-time. And they, you know, they threw a number out, you know, sixteen to twenty would, full-time would be what was needed. And so I said, okay, forty-six minus twenty, that's about twenty-six. You know, it kept, it kept get, coming back to that twenty-six, twenty-eight number that was in NFPA. I couldn't, I couldn't get away from that number. It, you know, everything just kept pointing back to it. So everything I looked at kept reinforcing that. All right, so then other people brought up the NFPA seventeen-ten, all right? So I went and pulled NFPA seventeen-ten up, and I read it in its entirety, three times, front to back, right? So I've got some questions, because I'm not sure I'm clear on NFPA seventeen-ten, but this is part of doing our due diligence and making sure we understand all the things we're talking about, the ramifications of our decisions. So when you, when you look at NFPA seventeen-ten, a couple of things jumped out at me. One was, it says, there's an annual report that shall be filed with the authority of jurisdiction, which means the city is the authority of jurisdiction to establish the fire departments. And annually, there's a, there's a required report that we get that says, where are our discrepancies, where are our gaps, and do we comply to all the regulations? And I don't know, now I'm asking the question. Was that annual report filed? Where is it? And we should see it. We should see what that annual report says. Now, that may answer a lot of questions, right? But that's the first time I had seen, right, a requirement that said an annual report should be filed, right? So I'm sure that report would have to talk about all this stuff you showed on the map, like response times, you know, everything that, we're talking about staffing level. So that's a report we need to see. All right, so then as you read down in NFPA seventeen-ten, it starts to get in to travel time, two hundred and forty seconds. If it's a non-high-rise structure, four hundred and eighty seconds. If it's a high-rise structure, six hundred and ten seconds. So it starts to specify travel time, but it's travel time. So I wanted to be clear, because I was understanding, reading that, that that was specific travel time only. Wheels roll, clock starts, wheels stop at the scene, clock stops. Doesn't include nine-one-one call came in, transmission time to the fire station, time to get out of the bunker, right, get dressed, get on, get on, 'cause they have times related to all that. So they give sixty, eighty seconds, so there's some time period built in that adds to that travel time. So then that's when you say, well, now you look at the next meeting, we had a recommendation that said we're going to go from our current staffing to either thirty-nine, thirty-six, I think it was, or maybe thirty-three, there was three numbers, right? But ten and a half reduction, and shut down Fire Station One, right? Okay. So I went back, and I, that's when I read NFPA seventeen-ten again. So I wanted to understand those times some more, those travel times. So I pulled up, not knowing, not knowing GIS and having capability to get in that quickly, I went up and pulled Google Maps up, and I started putting addresses in. And I started seeing exact distances from start, Fire Station Two to downtown to the courthouse, Fire Station Two to Eastern Little League, you know, Fire Station Three to Exit Five, you know, tried to see, you know, where the mileage from those fire stations looked like, because then you gotta say, there's a mile-per-hour assumption you have to make on a fire truck leaving a station, what are they rolling at? Are they rolling at the speed limit? I couldn't find anywhere in NFPA that said they have to abide by speed limits. It said, I think I read something about, with protection to life and property. So it means you gotta do a reasonable, a reasonable approach to traffic signals, but you can move as fast as you need to move, as long as you're being safe about it. So running down Euclid, running up Commonwealth Extension, running, you know, from Fire Station Three down Bonham Road, or getting on the interstate, I said, okay, sometimes they're gonna have to go slow, sometimes they can run fast, fifty-five or whatever, those trucks probably aren't designed to do much more than that. So I said, I'll assume forty miles an hour. I think that's reasonable as an average. So I assumed forty, right, wrong or indifferent. And then I ran the numbers of how much distance can you cover if you run forty miles an hour? And so for a two hundred and forty-second time period, it was two point six seven miles, right? And that's road miles. So when I did all that stuff, I, I put the circles out there, and I said, well, that means Station Two, you know, out by Randolph Field, can actually go with that kinda mileage, it can just touch Texas Avenue right near Eastern Little League. That's, that's about as far as that station could go and cover, you know, that ground in that time period. Now I looked at Station Three, and it was interesting to me that Bristol is, is kinda narrow and long. I don't know if anybody's looked at that, but you see it now, so it's, you know, long lines, we're thirteen point five square miles, so we're, you know, six or so that way, or about three to four this way, depending on where you are. We're wider down at the bottom and narrower at the top. So, so having two and three stationed where they are started to make a little sense to me, because somebody actually thought about that. I, I said, somebody really thought about where they put those stations when they built them. Because they could run north and south really easily along Lee Highway and, and the interstate, and they're really close to where all the new populated stuff is, like Exit Seven stuff, where the new school is, where all those new neighborhoods that we annexed. And then down here, Station Two can get out on a major artery much faster than Station One downtown, which is kinda blocked in by all the little streets that you gotta take rights and lefts on, so it can get out and get going. And then it can get down to Euclid and on Commonwealth and be downtown fairly quick, 'cause it's only like a little over a mile, you know, downtown. So, so it looked like to me, just by running those numbers, that Station Two and Three could cover, you know, the city's street mileage okay from those locations and be within NFPA seventeen-ten. So I wasn't seeing anything the contrary. And then I saw your, uh, report with maps, and so now you're saying that's not true. So I got questions like, what speed were you assuming, you know, how is it that, you know, it's only one point three miles to the courthouse and they can't get down here and under, you know, four minutes, that kinda stuff? So let me tell you some of the other questions. So my point here is, well, I mean, I know I'm taking too long, my point is, I'm trying to do my homework to figure out what the heck is going on here, 'cause I, I wanna be the last one that makes a decision that says, this was the wrong decision, right? So we gotta really look at this. So some other questions I had when I looked at all this was, you mentioned the firemen per thou, per one thousand, and I, everything you said there, when you got, I agree with you. There is not a single thing that I would dispute in what you said philosophically. You know, you can't just look at a fireman per thousand, that is not the only metric. So what is the risk? You know, how many fires have we actually had in this city, you know, and where have they been? And I think your little map there probably shows it, right? But Station Two's close to that, so one of the questions, why couldn't Station Two cover that high-risk, you know, area? Minimum number firemen, you brought that up, you know, you say that in your information, and you know, that was talked about in NFPA seventeen-ten, the minimum number of firemen. So now I'm confused a little bit on that, because we had, we had this presented to us that said NFPA fourteen, right? ISO twelve, right? And so you showed seventeen, I think. So, so that's gotta be reconciled, 'cause I'm still not clear on... So, so that's got to be reconciled, because I'm still not clear on the exact number that you need. So let's assume that Station One and Two has five, five, and five. A, B, C shift has five, five, and five. Station Three, five, five, and five. And then you have four supervisory, one at Station Two, one at Station Three. So your battalion commander. And then you have your fire chief and you have your fire marshal. So literally, when a fire happens, Station One, Two leaves, Station Three leaves, those, those five who are closest get there in the time period. The five behind it come from the other fire stations. You got ten on scene, and then the supervisory guys come with it and gives you fourteen. So when I looked at that, I said, well, that clearly is what I'm seeing here on NFPA. Fourteen, that would put feet on the ground, fourteen, when the fire happened, you should be compliant. And now you're showing seventeen. So you need to help us reconcile where the seventeen comes from. So I'll stop now. I've got more questions, but you can kind of get some of the big ones, right?
I believe, thank you, Councilmember Mumpere. I believe you touched on your, your first question about the ratio of firefighters per one thousand and that how, that can't be the only metric. And NFPA and the, and the document, the very document that you referenced, and in other documents that they publish, uh, they often state that there is no one-size-fits-all for the number of firefighters in each community. You know, Bristol has different demographic needs, response needs. The, the maps that you have before you, what we did not do is, we did not make assumptions. We took actual data and response times to calls for service between twenty-fourteen and twenty-sixteen over a three-year span, plugging that data in to show what the actual response time. And that's how we got those incident concentrations. And that's how we were also able to come up with, um, the times that are responsible, uh, and, and illustrated on that map. Uh, in reference to seventeen-ten, uh, I'm fortunate enough that on the, on the staffing and response time capabilities that I do have a, a little bit of subject matter of, uh, knowledge on it. Uh, both Chief Armstrong and I were graduates of the Executive Fire Officer Program in Emmitsburg. And four of those years require research components. One of my three, uh, research components that I conducted were related to the response time outlines and staffing provisions of NFPA seventeen-ten. Uh, the documents there only show travel time, you're correct. In your research, NFPA seventeen-ten breaks down turnout time, which includes nine-one-one processing and the time that it takes from the bell that struck from the firefighters to be wheels on the road. So this is just an illustration of travel time from wheels on the road to arrival on the scene. Um, these do not even add the additional time that are required for the turnout and processing time that you referenced through your research.
Can I interrupt this moment? Look, I've, we've been here an hour and a half. Can we let him come back and just take about five or ten?
We can take a recess, you come back and we can finish.
Is that okay? Because I really, I need a break.
Alright, very quickly, we'll take a, a five-minute recess, but please come back. We have more questions. Alright, uh, we'll go ahead and, uh, call the meeting back to order. Uh, thank everyone for, for the patience there during that recess. I know, after a while, everybody's going to get up and stretch their legs a little bit. Uh, we'll go back. I don't, I guess, uh, did you still have questions or Mr.?
Yes.
Montellus or whichever one of y'all, I don't remember how we ended with your.
Thank, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Mumpere. The, the last question that you asked was in reference to figure number four and stating the fifteen personnel that are required is illustrated in figure number four, um, compared to the fourteen firefighters that are recommended in the NFPA, uh, standard documents of NFPA seventeen-ten. And the NFPA seventeen-ten documents, they'll show a minimum of fourteen firefighters. What the three extra firefighters and personnel that are outlined in figure four are, one, you have an incident commander, a chief. Uh, two, uh, what the latest revisions and discussions at the NFPA seventeen-ten committee meetings are involving a chief's aide. And a chief's aide allows a, a secondary command function, a safety officer function, a, a division commander function. So it's an additional component of the incident command system. And then the third additional personnel, which would bring you to a total of seventeen, is utilizing the supply pumper operator as a true supply pumper operator instead of just flipping a switch and leaving the, the water pumper unattended. Because the current standard has those members involved in either the RIC operations, which are the safety crew, um, whereas there's a lot of risk that's associated with that that's being identified. Because if you have an interrupted water supply and your supply pumper, your engine driver, that's responsible for flowing water to your first attack pumper with the hose lines coming off, isn't there, and that water supply goes uninterrupted, there's nobody there to remedy that immediately. So the, the NFPA consensus standards, they're always a work in progress. Each of those committees, they're technical committees, that meet approximately every three to five years to revisit and evaluate the standards and to update them to make them more modern. So that's where the, the variation of that one person comes from in figure four.
Let's stay on that topic. So, so the example I gave you, if, if we did hypothetically have two fire stations operating, we had five on the A shift and five on the A shift at the other fire station. So that's ten firemen. And then you had two battalion commanders at each, so that's another two. So there's twelve. And then you had the fire chief and the fire marshal. So when you add all those up, you're saying that does not comply
No, it does not.
Alright, so tell me now, how we comply today? So we got three fire stations. So tell me how the shifts are staff that make sure that we do have seventeen, and you're telling me we have seventeen every time a fire happens today?
You do not. And the executive.
So we don't comply today?
Correct. And what the, what the proposals and the proposed cuts would put you in even a more dire position and make it harder to comply. Currently, the executive summary that we distributed last week shows where the city does not comply with NFPA seventeen-ten today. You can't with your current staffing profile. And you rely on mutual aid, which many communities do across the country.
Okay, so give me the scenario then. We're trying, you're trying to educate us, right? So if you got a fire station with three shifts, right?
And I don't want to misspeak on the very specific details of.
You're a fireman, you know, you know how fire stations are staffed, right? And I've looked at a lot of them, and most of them have three shifts, A, B, C. They're on twenty-four hours, right? So A's on twenty-four, the other two are off for two days, then come back on. So based on that scenario, how does a fire station have to be staffed to comply with NFPA seventeen-ten?
So there are varying staffing models that departments deploy all across the country. And a lot of that is dependent on travel times, demographics, the type of fire trucks that you have, and the fire ground tasks, the, how you want to perform them. So for example, traditionally, search and rescue is completed by a ladder company. But you have three companies, uh, an engine. You have an engine in all three of your fire stations. And all three of them may be on the road, and they may need to respond to a, a structure fire. And your engine company is going to be responsible for those traditional ladder search and rescue tasks. So it really is all dependent on how the, the fire chief and the fire department and the city identify based on your own unique demographic and response needs. But traditionally, across the country, the NFPA recommendation is having four firefighters per rig, which would allow you to assemble the correct number of firefighters on the fire ground. So if you had, for example, four firefighters on a shift at engine number one, and four firefighters on the shift at engine number two, and another four firefighters on the shift at engine number three, then, uh, you'd probably be deploying the ladder company from number three for a traditional, uh, standard residential structure fire. You would have twelve firefighters, um, deployed onto the scene. You'd have thirteen with your battalion chief. And you still would be relying on mutual aid to have that one additional firefighter.
Okay, so that comes to my next question. So mutual aid, your definition of mutual aid means if we've got a mutual agreement with a sister city like Bristol, Tennessee, that we only have so many firemen staffed at our stations. Once a fire happens, we're, we're initial response. So the first one rolls and those five show up, they, they are support. So they can come within the, you know, next eight or ten minutes as the extra personnel to give you that seventeen on the ground. So mutual support counts, right?
That's correct, as long as they are not deployed on an emergency within their own jurisdiction. And mutual aid is a great partnership when there's truly a mutual reciprocal partnership that for, you know, one jurisdiction may be slightly busier than the other, but generally that it would balance out that Bristol, Virginia is deploying resources to Bristol, Tennessee and vice versa, so that it's mutually beneficial and a cost savings for both jurisdictions, because you can't have a fire station on every corner.
We've had that agreement for, I don't know how long, forty years or longer. It's worked perfectly up until now.
The challenge you have is, you know, it's, it's working now. It's working with what you have to assemble the number of required firefighters on the scene. And that's, uh, we could also project out that data, including response times from Bristol, Tennessee, as it applies to Bristol, Virginia. Uh, what the, where the challenge lies is with the proposed reductions, if you remove, uh, Fire Station Number One and you pretty much exclusively rely on the Bristol, Tennessee Fire Department to provide coverage area or to supplement the coverage, at some point, and I'm not a representative of Bristol, Tennessee, but that council is going to face the same budget decisions that you're facing, and they're going to ask the questions of why are we sending, you know, the mutual aid, seventy-five to eighty percent of it is, uh, our department coming here versus a, a shared mutual partnership. Uh, and then they're going to start looking at their own policies and their own mutual aid practices. And that could place a mutual aid agreement in danger because their own constituents would demand that when we have an emergency in Bristol, Tennessee, we don't want our resources occupied or supplementing, permanently supplementing a station closure in Bristol, Virginia.
That, that's true. If we were having that many fires versus Bristol, Tennessee, therefore they were always helping us and we never helped them, I would be a hundred percent behind Tennessee raising, you know what?
Yeah.
But that hasn't been the case. And I've been, I'm seventy-three and I don't know every statistic that goes on in the city by far, but I can never remember when there was a fire on both sides of the town at the same time.
Uh, sir, that happens all the time.
I didn't say they didn't have them.
I can assure you, this is my profession.
Yeah.
It does happen.
When, when was that?
And also, it's, it's more than just fires. What you do, for example, is, if you close Fire Station One, you have Station Number Two. It takes an accident on the interstate that they must respond to, but the Fire Department is an all hazards response agency. If Station Number Two is on the interstate, then, and Station Number One's closed, then all you have is Station Number Three and the lengthy response time. So it's more than just structure fires.
It, I mean, there are scenarios, if we had four fire stations, that we couldn't get to all of them. If you had bricks, whatever scattered around, I grant you, nobody can afford to fully cover every single possibility that could happen.
Correct.
And you have to live, whether you like it or not, with the statistical numbers. How many fires do you have? How bad are they? Where are they? You've, you've shown that pretty well.
Mr. Hubbard, you cannot look at that because we cannot predict what tomorrow's going to have.
Oh, I understand.
And we, we can lower us down to three personnel. And if you want to look at those numbers, and what's going to happen to these citizens? These citizens are going to die. These citizens will die if you reduce our staffing. Our personnel, our guys, will die. Do you understand the ramifications of this? I mean, this is, this is serious stuff.
Hammer that.
Mr. Hubbard, Mr. Hubbard, and on that same token, if Station Two, it's a reciprocating agreement between mutual aid. So if Bristol, Tennessee is working a structure fire on Broad Street or Anderson Street, and Engine Two goes over there, then all their resources are committed to their fire, and so is our station committed to that fire. So who is going to protect one fire station with three guys? I mean, we got to be realistic here, folks. I mean, we cannot plan for everything, for sure. Yeah, these, I mean, a seven forty-seven can land in the middle of the city, but can three guys take care of it? It cannot. I mean, we, we have.
We can't afford to cover that occasion.
Sir?
I say that could certainly happen, but we can't afford to cover it, is what I'm saying.
We can't afford not to cover it. We cannot afford not to cover these citizens.
Uh, well, uh, please refrain from applause so we can continue with the discussion.
And I'm going to, I'm going to agree to disagree with the comments, because we're not here to say we're not trying to protect the citizens. We're trying to figure out, we're trying to figure out what the right number is, because I'm not there yet, guys. You, you, you got to get me there, and I'm not there yet, I'm telling you. So I'm, I'm looking at these other cities and I'm trying to get there, so either we're doing something really different that they're not doing or vice versa. So you got to help me understand that, because if we're not complying, and you just said, we're not complying today with NFPA. And we've got more people than these other towns. Well, that means, one, they're not complying, right? And two, they're, they've got the same problem we've got. They, they only have so many tax dollars, right? So every city's got so much real estate tax coming in, so they got to decide where they put it. But when you look at all these other cities like us, they're putting it to a pretty close ratio to what we've been talking about. And so that's where it comes down. And so you need to, you need to help us reconcile that, right? Because what you, what you put in one department, so let's talk about a team environment here. So what you put in one department, whether it be the Fire Department or anywhere else, is a dollar you can't put somewhere else. Right? Because the city has to support the educational side, it's got to support the police, it's got to support the fire. So, so when you think about it in those terms, right, you got to be really sure and careful that you're putting the exact amount and right number in every space, because if you're putting too much here and you're not over here, that's not right either. So the kid, I told you in a previous council meeting, these kids only have one chance in life, and it's the education they get. So it would be wrong to sit here and say, we know we've got a few too many, and we're taking away dollars from the education system, putting it over here in the Fire Department, we're not giving them the opportunity to get the education they need. So I'm just saying, you know, I got to make sure that the decision we make is fair and it's right for all these departments in the city. And so you, you still don't, you still don't have me there. So I'm, I'm trying to get there, okay?
Councilmember Mumpere, thank you for your comments. And I'm not a fear monger. That's not how I operate. I'm very research and data-driven. The situation that you're facing and the proposed cuts that are, that are being discussed, you can't afford not to fund the Fire Department. And when you're talking about the children and the education, the proposed cuts, what that would do, if their house is on fire and they are trapped, there is no one there to save them. Six firefighters coming to a fire scene. You have your first company that's deploying an attack line. They need to extinguish the fire. That second company, by law, by OSHA, must be the firefighter rescue team. There's no one left for search and rescue. There's no one left for ventilation. At least now, your incident commander and your on-scene units can make a judgment call. If they show up and they arrive on a scene and the family's outside and they say that nobody's inside, then that third company can be utilized for ventilation to remove those dangerous gases and make it easier for the firefighters to protect those citizens' homes. If there is someone inside or that we don't know if they're trapped, that judgment call and that incident commander is going to deploy them for search and rescue. And this is not, uh, it's not a fear-mongering strategy or tactic. I just really want to emphasize why these personnel are so important on this fire ground and what they actually do and why they're needed and what their tasks are. And by what, what the cuts that are discussed and being proposed, what that would take away from the Fire Department's abilities to do. And firefighters get it done. You know, they're there to serve the community, and they're there to take higher risks. They're going to take even higher risks. You're going to have more firefighters injured, which is going to result in, God forbid and hope no deaths, but it's going to result in strain, in injury, and longer times out of work. The fewer firefighters on a fire ground, the less productive they are. That executive summary, uh, and the beginning of this GIS analysis actually have that data, that, that, the statistical analysis that shows reducing personnel, how much that increased critical fire ground tasks. And I urge you to take a additional thorough review of that data prior to making decisions about that cut of those cuts.
I just want to ask you, I mean, I'm going to throw you a curveball here. I'm going to ask you a hypothetical. So let's say, let's say this is not even Bristol, Virginia. Let's say this is a brand-new city, me and you are starting up, and we know there's going to be seventeen thousand people, and we know it looks just like that. Is that the way you would set this fire station up and how would you staff it, to make sure it was correctly staffed? Exactly what we have today? Would you do it exactly that way? Forty-six is budgeted. We're running with forty-three, so we've lost three, and we got three fire stations. So tell me about that. Is that the right way to manage this city from a fire services standpoint?
Well, we're not, I, I'm not an urban planner. And also, when many of these stations were built and placed in the service, growth was different, population density was different. Um, you had higher populations in some areas, lower in others. The interstate has picked up and the transportation that comes across that corridor. So it's a, an ever-changing dynamic. So you can't always predict for exactly where a fire station should be and exactly how many numbers you need if you're, if you're starting a city from scratch. Because it's a, it's an evolution over time.
I understand, but unfortunately, when you're in this position, right, that we're in, you've got hard choices. in, you've got hard choices to make.
Yes, sir.
So you have to decide what's the right amount for the right fire services to make sure we take care of the city, the, the risk of fire is not there, right? So, so you have to make some tough calls based on risk. Yes, you have to make some tough decisions, because you, you made-
You said the risk of fire is not there.
Let me fin, let me finish, let me finish. You've got to make some tough decisions based on, you know, what is the right number, and how do you deploy those resources? Because nobody wants to look themselves in the mirror and say, we, we didn't do this right, and we put the citizens at risk. So my question's pretty simple, right? What's the right number? Because if you go back in time, right, to when fire station two and three came into being, we only had one fire station, right? Prior to annexation, right? So those were additions. So the population of the city and how big we were back then was fifteen to sixteen thousand. And then all of a sudden, we annexed, I don't know if you know this history, we annexed, you know, the county, so we picked up all those neighborhoods you see around station three, new elementary school got built, so all that activity up there got picked up. That's when station three came into being. We hired firemen to, to staff that, right? So, so we went from one station to three in a myriad of two to five years, right? And so the population of the city boomed to about nineteen thousand and something, it peaked right around the late seventies, early eighties. And since then, it's gone the other way. So now we're almost back to where we started, right? We're back to pre-annexation, uh, population. So let's hypothetically say that, that trend keeps up. We've lost six hundred citizens just since the last census. It was seventeen eight hundred, now we're down to seventeen one forty-one. It's going, it's going this way. So let's see that trend continue. Let's say we're, we wake up two years now, and we're at fifteen five. How about fourteen five? At what point, you know, there's a right amount of staffing for what you're trying to protect? And, and you've got to come to grips with that, because you can't keep forty-six, if the population goes down to five thousand, you'll never be able to pay for that, right? So that, that's where I'm trying to get to. You see where I'm trying to get to?
Yeah, and I'll add to this, because this is something that I've been thinking about that is, you know, the metric is population, but you're talking about an area where there's probably more homes than there were twenty years ago. New structures have been built. It's structures that catch on fire. I mean, you know, you want to protect people's lives, but we're also about protecting their property in these structures. And, you know, a lot of that area, when I look at those maps, you know, again, I, it, it just confirms to me what seemed to be common sense when I thought about what happens if you close station two down, is you leave a huge donut hole in the center of town where you have older structures that were built, um, probably that wouldn't be up to code today, that you have structures that are built on narrow lots. And so response time to, is, to me, the critical thing. And, and showing those maps and what the response time, it, it's amazing that even as we're are now, that there's a huge gap that you can't get to. That, you know, kind of, in listening to all this about the, the standards, the, the seventeen ten, I mean, it sounds like we're probably understaffed as it is, that, that these cuts will make it much, much worse. And, and, you know, it's, yeah, it's a risk, but I mean, there, there's a lot of other factors that go into this. I mean, you have people, particularly one of the areas that is at risk is our downtown, and you've got people that have invested a lot of money over the last few years. I mean, just walk outside, and you can see a twenty million dollar investment within a football field length of, of the fire station there. I mean, and that's one of the tallest structures in town. So how, if, God forbid, something was to happen, what, how would that, you know, be protected? People have commented, and I don't know the answer to this, but about their insurance. And I can only imagine it goes up. I don't think this kind of decision makes people's insurance go down. You know, and, and another risk that, that people have mentioned that, that I don't know, and, and maybe Mr. Eads could comment on, is the risk of lawsuits. And, and I don't know what kind of potential liability the city, not, not necessarily criminal liability, I'm thinking more in a civil case.
Well, if you remember, I think it was two weeks ago, I had contacted our insurance carrier in regards to what happens if we, of course, it's all hypothetical, and no one knows what's going to happen at a, at a trial, if it would get to trial. But I brought this up to council several weeks ago. Uh, I spoke with, um, our insurance carrier, and I proposed, you know, what would happen? And my question to them was, what would happen if we show up, we're understaffed for a fire, and an individual dies in that home fire? And we're not to the NFPA standards, you know, one, are we breaking any laws? We're not necessarily breaking any laws. Now, there are OSHA regulations that we do have to comply with. So then we would have to answer to OSHA, God forbid some firefighter gets hurt or killed, and we've got to notify OSHA basically within four hours, I think, of a death. So, um, there's going to be an investigation in regards to OSHA. And then there's going to be some plaintiff's lawyer that just happens to see that, oh, well, they cut twenty-five percent of their firefighters in fiscal year two thousand seventeen, eighteen, and says this may be a potential lawsuit. So then they bring a lawsuit, saying that we weren't properly staffed. Well, then the question becomes, does the city have sovereign immunity? Yeah, we do have sovereign immunity. However, that does not always apply. And it doesn't mean that a judge is always going to grant us a motion for summary judgment or demurra based solely on sovereign immunity. And then we're going to have to be faced with the issue of, do we want to try this case? And where the evidence would be presented by plaintiff's counsel that had fifteen firefighters been at the scene within four minutes, or six minutes, um, they might have had a rescue team to be able to go in and save a mother's life, or a father's life, or someone's life. And then it's going to be up to the jury to decide how much. It's not a question, because in my opinion, a good plaintiff's counsel could sway a jury in regards to, these are standards, they're not necessarily laws, but the city may have chosen not to fund it to standards.
Mr. Eads, let me ask you something, and, and I've already basically told everybody where I stand.
And, well, let me finish this up.
Let me, let me ask you a question, though. What you're saying, though, you know, Washington County is a jurisdiction also. So, I mean, I, this is where I disagree with you, okay, on any kind of lawsuit issue. Washington County, are you saying government can be sued if they don't have, Washington County, to my knowledge, has no fire department. They have volunteer fire departments. So if your analogy, then, because Bristol had a fire department, and we drew it down, I mean, I mean, you know, somebody says I'm wrong in the audience, but, I mean, I mean, what I'm, what I'm saying is, we have volunteer fire departments, before I know, in Washington County. In Smith County, Marion has a downtown fire department, but I don't know of anyone in Saltville or whatever. And what I'm saying is, you can't, certainly can't be saying that you think that, that there would be any kind of lawsuit under any kind of fathomable, can you give me any kind of, I mean, I, I'm for the firemen, I, I told you, I'm not going to, I'm not going to support the cuts that have been proposed. But I'm still saying, you're, you're putting out here a hypothetical that I don't think matches the law.
Well, that's what the question was. The question was, what's our liability? And I'm giving you a hypothetical answer of what the potential liability could be, based on what I spoke with our insurance carrier, who happens to deal with liability issues in regards to what counties and cities and towns do. And the answer I got was, you may be writing a check. That was his exact words. Or actually, his exact words were, we will be writing a check. And now, the question becomes, at the end of the day, how big of a check potentially? I'm not saying that this could happen. What I'm saying is, the question was, what is our potential liability? And if you want to look, and the way I've, and you know this is, you've known me as an attorney, and I-
I'm trying to figure out what theory you'd go under, strict liability or negligent theory?
Well, I think it'd probably be negligence at this point.
Okay, okay.
Um, but I always go with the worst-case scenario. I don't think I've ever had a client walk out of my office that says, well, he never told me that could happen. Because it can happen, it does happen, and you have to be prepared for that worst-case scenario and hope for the best all the time. And I've learned that in, in my legal career. Once you prepare for the worst, and you know where the angle of attack is coming from, you can prepare for that attack, and attack it the way it needs to be attacked. And the question that was presented to me is, what's our potential liability? And that's a worst-case scenario of our potential liability.
So in, in, following your line of thinking, in Nordike, Washington County, Virginia, or let's use it better, let's go on Mendota Road, okay? And there is a house fire. And, um, I would, I don't know what the response time is out in there. Of course, people are choosing to live in the county, and they're choosing to live in the rural area. But, you know, the theory that you're saying, then any governmental, any government could potentially be sued if they don't have a response time fast enough, and I think that that would be stretching the bounds.
I think you're, I think you're getting into technical situations. What the difference we have between Washington County and volunteer fire departments and the city of Bristol is, the city of Bristol at some point years ago made a decision to fund the fire department. And we have continued to fund the fire department up through, right now. And now we're making a decision, potentially making a decision, that might have staffing issues. Whereas in the county, the county has never taken that responsibility on. They have never said, we want a fire department for the county. Or, or the town of Abingdon for that fact. I mean, I, I think if I'm not mistaken, that's a volunteer fire department in Abingdon. But they have never put themselves on the record of saying, hey, we're funding a fire department with full-time employees. And I think that would be a technical issue that would have to be worked out later, uh, through the courts as to whether or not, and I don't, at this point, I don't know of any county, uh, that has been sued. I mean, I'll preface it that way. I don't know of any county or city that's been sued because of something like that. I'm just saying, based on the question that was presented to me, hypothetically, what could potentially happen?
And hypothetically, if we don't have, if, if a jurisdiction doesn't have funding, doesn't have the appropriate funding and so forth. See, what I would hope this council would have done is put it on a referendum to either increase the taxes or do whatever, and let the people decide for themselves. But we didn't do that. We chose not to. You remember that was discussed?
Right.
Yes, which is the democratic way to do things, okay? And everything, but with all respect, I, 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 I just disagree with you. I think that you're basically saying that every jurisdiction, and, and it's not changing my vote or my opinion, I'm just trying to say, your, your hypothetical is saying any jurisdiction that gets financial hardship can be sued because they have to cut different departments. I mean, that'd be the same thing about police department, if you cut the police department. I mean, you know, theoretically, if we don't have enough teachers, and a child is, well, you know, God, I hope that never happens, but, because it came down to a test when they're out of eighteen. If a child didn't get enough education, you know, or whatever, sue the school system for that. I mean, you know, I mean, we, we can't stretch these gamuts out here.
You can't, you can't, but, I mean, this goes, and I, I think I told you, we had a conversation on the phone, and I, I think you presented, you asked me, why did I do that? If I'm not mistaken, and I said, well, I knew it was potentially be a question, and what, I was trying to get ahead of the game in regards to a liability question. So that's why I picked up the phone to the insurance company, uh, because they're the ones who know, has this ever happened to them before? And, um, I mean, specifically, he does not know of a county, or a city, or a town that's been sued because of it. Now, he gave me a hypothet, or it wasn't a hypothetical, an actual case, where there was an incident where, um, if I'm not mistaken, the fire hydrants weren't where they should have been throughout the town, or the county, or something. And there was a, a suit based on that, and they, uh, had to write a check to the plaintiff because of that.
And I agree with that.
And, you know, so my question was almost identical to the mayor's question, you know, what's our liability if this happens? And, you know, he said, you might be writing the check, it just depends on the facts and circumstances. You know that as an attorney, and-
I know we've got a lot of stupid lawyers around, but I don't know any stupid enough lawyer to take a case like that, let's be perfectly honest with you, okay? I mean, I, I just don't. So I don't think that's even an issue, quite frankly.
And, I mean, I preface that. I mean, there's, but, I know of no suit, I've researched the issue.
Okay.
I, I don't, I haven't seen a lawsuit that has been brought because of that, where there's been an incident of an injury or a death because of a lack of funding of fire departments or something.
Well, okay, thank you. We'll move on, and, and I guess, we've got a little- And, you know, again, my comment's there, but I, like I said, to me, the, the, it's more about structures than population. And, and I will just add, you're talking about the downward trend in population, I, you know, one thing that I see is, is again, people that have made investments, how does this encourage people to move into the city and buy property and invest? And grow our city? And I think, you know, that's, that's an issue that I have concern with. But please, um, just if I may-
Mr. Brass, if your answer is quick.
The councilman, Mumpire, just to try to help you understand some of the numbers you were throwing out in the Upper Valley, uh, because I represent those departments. Uh, the city of Stanton is actually applying for six additional positions through the SAFER grant process.
Okay.
And the city of Waynesboro, both of those localities have strong volunteer components and stations within probably less than two miles of being able to respond into those localities. So they can roll the dice more with that volunteer component to have more people in there. And then the last thing I'd like to say is, too, when you read this report, and I ask you to read it again, you've heard the presentation, think of the fire service as all hazards, not just EMS and fire. You have a state-funded technical rescue team and a hazardous materials team. You have a ton, many tons, daily, of hazardous materials moving up and down your interstate system. And if anything was to happen between, between, say, exit seven and the county line, and you're, I'm not Chief Armstrong, but I was a former operations chief of the city of Charlottesville, he's going to have a tough decision to make on how many technicians he can keep, and how many technicians might have to go. And if he can't keep that up, then the state's going to come in and may decertify your team. It's not a threat, I'm just giving you advice, when you think about that.
Mayor Hartley.
And if that happens, your closest team is a volunteer team out of Wise, or a career team out of Roanoke.
Mayor Hartley, I'll tell you what, you, you, you talked about, you know, people may not want to come here. I'll tell you what else really concerns me. We have, our demographics are, we're losing population, this dawned on me, too, but our population's getting older. It really are. And, you know, if we don't have that type of response and so forth, we really could lose some of our older people, and, and that's really, that's really concerning. I've got a ninety-one-year-old father, and if anything happened like that, you talk about crime, it'd be worse than I did earlier, okay? So, I mean, that's something that I have to think about. It's not just, it's not just a younger person, you know, God help, they can be able to move and get out and so forth, but it's the older people that I'm concerned about, like Mr. Hubbard here, at seventy-three, you know, I mean, uh-
I appreciate that, Councilman Flanner.
Mr. Flanner, I'll just say, I'm not worried about Mr. Hubbard.
He moves faster than I can, but, uh-
We've talked a little bit about mutual aid tonight, and that's in seventeen ten. And I think we need to understand there are two types, automatic aid and then just mutual aid. And our agreement with Tennessee is automatic aid, meaning if this building had a fire alarm right now, they would send a truck if it was available. And they'll do that so far into the city of Bristol to where they say, you got to cover it yourself. And typically, that's not an issue. On mutual aid, if we have a fire alarm at the Holiday Inn at exit seven, for example, they're not coming.
All right.
That, that, that automatic aid is out the window. But what we do is notify Washington County and say, hey, can you send us a truck down to help? Now, we have to ask, and they'll usually comply with our request. So that's two different types of issues right there. But I, I think it's worth noting, um, we typically field ten people a day. And when we have a fire alarm, and Tennessee sends us a truck, that gets us to thirteen, and when I come out, that's how we hit that goal of fourteen. So that, that's how the numbers come to fourteen. We don't have the luxury of a chief's aide, or, or some of the other positions that were mentioned earlier. We just do without. And I'll give you an example, um, the Friday before last, when we had the fire right up the street, when the first truck showed up there right at five o'clock, the building was burning pretty good. The first guy, the driver jumps out, tries to get connected to the fire hydrant, tries to get the pump engaged.[1738.72] The officer and the firefighter are now stretching a line to the front door to get in there to see if there's any trapped victims. So they're doing search and rescue and trying to take a hose in. They're doing the work of four people with two. All right? Now, the next truck shows up, has to be that two out that we talked about with the OSHA regulation. So now they're kind of out of the picture, but that does free up their driver, who hopefully is going to help the first driver connect it to the fire hydrant. On that particular fire we had, that hydrant was not the best, so we did without a quality water supply for several minutes. And that game, that allowed that fire to grow, in my opinion. So then when the third, our third truck gets here from exit seven, now we can send more resources inside to do a more, uh, expeditious search and rescue operation. And then when Tennessee showed up, they actually brought us a fire hydrant from almost all the way down from MLK Boulevard. They laid a mile of hose to get to a good water supply. Once we got that water supply, we raised the aerial ladder, which usually requires an extra person. We did without. The guy that was operating the pump had to jump back and forth from the ladder operation platform on top of the truck to the pump panel. So he was doing two jobs by himself. We were able to knock that fire out pretty quickly and saved it from spreading into the house next door. So, you know, right now, with ten people on a shift, and that usually, we have a couple extra because we've got people that go to military duty and, and things like that. So as far as the numbers go, that's how we meet that goal of fourteen.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Um, any, any further questions? Mr. Wingard?
Yeah, I just had a couple more comments.
Okay, Mr. Mumpire.
You mentioned Waynesboro's using some volunteers, and we talked about they're supplementing their paid career firefighters. So why, why aren't we doing that? I mean, why, why is it that we're all career fire paid here? We're not trying at least three or four, you know, a few volunteer firemen to supplement like Waynesboro is doing? Because that's how these communities, like Waynesboro's, keeping their, their budgetary costs down. You know, they're supplementing with some other resources, uh, so why can't we do that?
Well, nothing I don't think says you can't, sir. Um, but what you have to consider is, they have infrastructure already in place. They have tradition in those areas of sixty, seventy years as all volunteer and career because of the demand for service got to be more than the volunteers could come up with. Uh, I can't do your numbers, but if you were to go out today, um, a staffing requirement or a staffing number that we use is to put one body in a seat of a fire truck every day, three sixty-five, twenty-four-seven, is four people. It's three point eight, something like that. So you can imagine, if you were to try to go out and create a supplemental volunteer service, you would probably need in excess of a hundred volunteers, stations, equipment, training, the cost would be tremendous. Waynesboro and Stanton have had that in place since the mid nineteen twenties or thirties, just like the city of Charlottesville had it in place going back into the early eighteen hundreds. So that was something that they decided a long time ago. But I don't think financially now, um, it would be feasible, maybe it is, for you folks to do that. But that's how they, uh, get away with those lower numbers. Plus, their, the city of Stanton is using the federal government, applying for a SAFER grant, uh, to hire those personnel, um, which they will eventually have to pick that cost up at the fourth year of the grant process. But they're using, using new and different ways to, uh, increase their staff.
Well, Radford's doing it too. You know, Radford's only got thirteen paid firemen, they got eighteen volunteers, so they're, and they're almost identical to the size of us. So they're doing something similar, right? They're supplementing their career paid firefighters with some volunteers, you know, to keep their fire resources where they need to be for their size community and not have the, you know, budgetary constraints. So that's, that's why we're trying to get to where we need to get to, because this city, again, this city's not in a healthy financial position. I, I hope everybody understands that. And it's not getting any better. And if it goes south worse than it is today, that's our dilemma. If we had, if we had all kinds of tax base, if we had all kinds of revenue, we wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't probably have this discussion, but every penny counts. I mean, we're, we're just, we're just down to...
We borrowed six more million dollars last fall, okay? We went and did six million dollars more as a council on top of the already hundred-plus million dollars, so you gentlemen understand that, okay? I've been advocating, I don't have any support here, supposedly we can't do bankruptcy, chapter nine bankruptcy, that saves essential services and so forth and so on. And it gets the people that didn't create the mess, the taxpayers in this city, that didn't, you know, it gets them off the hook for this stupid debt we've got. The landfill, we got, y'all don't know about, you know, we got a dump up here, and, you know, they call it a landfill, it's a dump. And you talk about toxic substances, you know, we need y'all to go up there and check and see what, because it glows at night. Literally, it glows. I mean, I'm afraid if somebody struck a match up there, it'd blow the Bristol up, okay? Seriously. And we've got the thirty-three million there. And we've got the Falls Project. That's a disaster.
Sell it.
Nobody wants to buy it. Nobody's stupid enough to buy it.
They won't buy it.
Nobody, six more million dollars, okay? File bankruptcy, get the taxpayers off the hook, keep our firemen, keep our policemen, the schools can be part of Washington County and get rid of our constitutional officers. We pay all this back within six or seven years, period. But no, we want to save Bristol. Well, Bristol is going bankrupt, folks. It's just a matter of if we do it today or we do it down the road. But nobody wants to face reality. But I'm going to tell you what, I'm not going to risk one old person's life or young person's life because of, okay? I'm not going to do it. I'm not going to take policemen off the streets either. But there's other things we're going to cut in this city. I'll guarantee you, when we have our public hearing, I, I backed up on them. I backed up on this council tonight. I'll tell you, I own it. I backed up. I told Mr. Wingard something completely different, told Mr. Mumpire something completely different. I'm not saying that we don't need some cuts. I'm not saying ten's too much, that's too deep. You know, maybe we can do attrition. But I'm going to tell you, mark my word, any penny that this council wants to hide behind tourism, tourism, okay? Or Bristol Country Music Museum, we're going to get money, I wouldn't pay them a penny. And you all, if you allow it to happen, to pay this crap, then you deserve what you get. You got it up here now, okay? Period, okay? Period.
Do we, do we have any more questions, uh, for Mr. Wise, Mr. Brass, or Mr. Contellus?
Mayor Hartley, I would like to make a comment.
Go ahead, Chief.
I, I've talked to the chief in Stanton several times, and he's told me they do not have volunteers. They're supported around by Augusta County, which surrounds Stanton and Waynesboro. So I just, I think we need to understand that. He's told me on several occasions that, yes, in the old days, they used to have volunteers, and the same thing with Waynesboro, but now they're just nonexistent. And I've talked recently with Chief Starr in Washington County, right up on Route Eleven, he's got eight paid firefighters in that one station, and Goodson Kinderhook has six, from what they're telling me, paid firefighters, that they pay out of their EMS billing. And I just met with him within a month, and he said that their volunteering is getting way down, they're paying people to run calls. They pay them if they pull a shift, they get a stipend. So technically, they're paid, not just the aid that I mentioned, but addition to. And the thing that concerns me, I would love to have some volunteers to augment our forces. That, that would be fantastic, but he said what they're running into is that they have to give them gear, pay for their training, pay for their insurance, their workers' comp. They're putting four and five thousand bucks per person, and they're lucky if they see them a couple of times a month. And it's nothing against them, they work two jobs and have families. So their time allotment, if you've got a few hours to spend, do you want to go down to the fire hall, or do you rather spend it with your wife and kids, or your spouse, or whatever? So it, it's getting tough out there, and, you know, I will certainly continue to look for volunteers that may like to come into the city and work with us, but that's going to take money to cover them. And talking with VML, I know we're getting ready to go away from VML, but they advised against us, um, I, I met with Ms. Henderson in HR, and she asked VML about bringing volunteers into the city, and if we cover them with insurance, then that establishes an employer-employee relationship. And we have to be very careful of that, because now, is that going to open the door to other benefits? So just food for thought.
And if I may, just to concur with Chief Armstrong, you're exactly correct. What I meant was that the city of Stanton, the city of Waynesboro have volunteer companies in Augusta County around them that can, responded on mutual aid grant, not that they actually had volunteers under that jurisdiction.
And I used to work in Augusta County, and it boggled my mind, we had a paid fire station in the Stanton city limits. And basically Stanton benefited by that free station, but now Augusta County's talking about seriously pulling out, and that's why Stanton is now putting in for a federal grant to pay for their own staffing. And the chief told me that they're looking at a, a used car dealership to remodel into a fire station, so they'll have a third fire station, and they're going to have to go out and buy a fire truck to put in it. So they're looking to add a third fire station, um, top to bottom in the very near future.
Well, and I'd just add, in reading over the, the profile that, uh, was first mentioned, uh, you know, it mentions that, I think you had mentioned, Mr. Contellus, that, that over the last twenty, thirty years, the trend is towards career firefighting and, and volunteers for a lot of the reasons you probably just mentioned, chief, that it's, it's harder to find people because of work, family commitments, that, in anything, to volunteer like that. And...
And I actually agree, and I think the trend, the trend's also more toward the fire departments doing emergency services. I mean, lifesaving crew stuff, and we know that. You can look across all the data and read about it, because what's happening is, and everybody should know this, construction standards have really improved, and they're driving us to where we are today, right? So high-rise buildings, any commercial building today requires automatic sprinkler systems that's, you know, got to melt and turn on. You didn't used to see that, you know, years ago. So everything's being forced to be better from a construction standpoint, which now that means the instances of the major fires are down, which is, that's what you want. You don't want anything to catch fire. So they're forcing the standards to, to improve, but the emergency services is where the fire departments are starting to go to, to try to enhance that lifesaving, you know, activity.
Mr. Mumpire, I'm, again, I'm going to cordially disagree with you. You're, you're correct in some sense, but some sense, the building industry has gotten worse for the fire service. If you'll look now at truss construction, lightweight truss construction is what residences are being built with today. When you heat metal, what happens to it?
Melts.
No, it does not. It will expand.
It gets a certain temperature to melt.
Yes, it will melt after a certain temperature, but what happens to it? It starts to expand.
Right.
So what is at the top of those roof trusses and stuff? The gusset plates. So when that heat, where's the heat go? Goes to the ceiling, goes to the highest point. So what happens to those trusses? Fires are burning hotter today. They are burning faster today because of the synthetics that's in the carpets, the synthetics that's made out of the wood, the, the couches. This is not nineteen-sixties. This is not nineteen-fifties when, when those houses and stuff were being built. We know our job. Again, we know building construction. I can promise you, we take courses in this stuff all the time. We know how fast fires are going to burn. Now, you know, a fire, a house, residential house fire could, has the potential to collapse in less than fifteen minutes. Less than fifteen minutes, sir. And you're talking about the travel times and all that stuff. This is where this comes into this. If we do not get there in a timely, quick manner to try to effect a rescue, then we are behind the eight ball. And we only have a limited window. As me, as an incident commander sometimes on the fire scene, I will not, do not want to get one of my guys hurt or killed, you know, in there searching for somebody that may be in there, they may not be in there. We don't know. At three o'clock in the morning, this vacant abandoned house up here on Lee Street, how do we not know that a vagrant walked into that building and sitting upstairs had him a little fire burning or something, fell asleep? We don't know that. Even though it looks vacant, we have to still try to effect a search and rescue, and we have to try to make those attempts. And the building construction today, this house up here, old house, lot of heavy timber, lot of big wood. Houses today, when you take the, the I-beams underneath the floor, you know, on the floor joists of a house, what are they made out of? You know, they are made out of pieces of press board that is glued, and just a little bitty strip of, you know, two-by-two or something on the bottom. So that's what we have, that's what we're dealing with today. The newer houses of the last twenty years, this is what we're going towards. And these fires are burning hotter, faster, and they're going to get some, you can look at it all the time, look at the videos of the fires and stuff that's happening, and I can tell you, firefighters are getting killed at high rates because of these building construction materials that are being used today.
Any more questions? I do have one question, since I see him sitting over there, I'm going to put Mr. Miller on the spot. Since he came and gave us a wonderful presentation about GIS and, and these maps here, uh, did those routes and stuff look, uh, pretty much, based on your experience? I know you, you didn't really necessarily have time to create all that, but...
Yes, actually, it's a request from the city manager. I generated a map, uh, over the last day or so, and essentially what you see on the screen here, uh, if you'll give me just a moment to get swapped over to where I can control. The, the map that you see here essentially shows the specified four-minute or two-hundred-and-forty-second drive times that have been mentioned over and over again. Uh, I, is all I can specifically state on are the numbers that I came up with, and I, I can state emphatically that my road center lines are the exact road center lines that nine-one-one for this city uses. They've been verified time and time again for length, they've been verified for location. And the thing that you see here is the, the green area obviously is the four-minute drive time from the time a vehicle leaves station two. The blue is a four-minute drive time from the time it leaves station one, and of course the yellow covers station three. Now, as you can see, we have a small gap in the center of the city that is around the Machesney Heights area that goes completely north and south to, to the city limits, uh, in both parameters. But those areas, there is nothing we currently have that will cover a structure in those areas within that two-hundred-and-forty-second drive time. When we start looking at this, uh, just to give you a very brief idea, from a nine-one-one standpoint, we have what's called ESN zones. This entire city is now broken into fifteen separate ESN zones with the fire station compiling, compiling three of them. In the event that you decide to do away with a fire station, the entire dispatch that we currently use will have to be torn apart and rebuilt from the ground up, addressing every single phone number in every single city in this, in this city. Because the ESN zones determine when you make a phone call, the moment you pick that phone up, which fire station is responding, which lifesaving crew is responding, and which police vehicle is on its way to you in the allowed amount of time that the state mandates we provide. So with that being said, just to give you an idea, when we look at this four-minute response time, and this was kind of what jumped out at me, uh, there's a little bit of a pink elephant that the city has to deal with that a lot of municipalities don't. And for us, the problem we have is a thing called the railroad. The railroad in this city blocks station one or station two from crossing at three major points. One of them's going to be on Commonwealth Avenue at Strongwell, one of them will be at Euclid Avenue at Southern States, and the other will be at Spurgeon Lane. Now, when you think about those three crossings, in the event that there is a train sitting there, I don't know this as factual numbers, but I've been told he can sit there for up to fifteen minutes so long as he moves in some direction once every five minutes. Now, the vast majority of this city, I'm sure, has been caught by a train on Euclid Avenue, Commonwealth, and possibly Spurgeon. We have two of our bigger manufacturing industries there.
Martin Luther King, too.
Absolutely. But that doesn't come into play when you're discussing the difference between stations one and two.
Okay.
Yeah, this, this was specifically targeted to give you gentlemen a better idea of the decision you're making, uh, simply based on response time. So if you'll, if you'll look very closely, you see the blue for station one, and when I turn off station one in the hypothetical world that we get rid of it, there's the area that just went to the two-hundred-and-forty-second of non-response time. Everybody that doesn't have a green or a yellow line on their road is outside of that window. Now, we, I've even gone one step further when I, when I analyze this information and have what's called fire points. Every single one of these red dots breaks every single road center line in this city down to a length of two hundred feet or less. I can click on any single dot in this map and tell you the exact linear footage from the front door of all three fire stations to get to that point. So doesn't matter every single intersection and every single road that's more than two hundred linear feet in length, we have calculated data that tells us how far it is. Now, the one variable we can't control, traffic volumes, uh, is there construction going on that restricts a fire truck from, from going somewhere? All of those are things that we just have to make a best guess on.
What does your model assume? That, that the fire truck, uh, ran at the posted speed limit, or what?
Yes, and that's what we have to go by, simply because fire trucks do, uh, in a safe manner at times exceed the speed limit, but fire trucks also require an enormous amount of time to stop to go around a curve. So the national standard says you use that twenty-five mile-per-hour city standard posted, uh, speed to, to do your modeling for these ESN zones.
Yeah, that's one thing I couldn't find, was if there's a required speed limit, so I think it just says, you know, they got to be safe and cognizant of property and life and... and so they can run faster than speed limits, especially with sirens going. But if you, if you ran the model, what speed would they have to get up to out of those stations to actually hit and have no gap? That would be one question. I mean, what would you have to run out of station one? Because you, you have a gap today.
Yeah, sure.
You've got a huge gap, right? And that's exactly where I live, in fact, you know, in Chesney Heights.
Yes, I do know.
Which, okay, I'm not, I'm not liking this picture you got here, so I need to understand this. So what speed would they have to run at to get there?
Well, that's determined, once again, by the speed limit of the street.
No, forget the speed limit. Can you go into the model and say, if the fire truck ran at forty mile an hour average, or forty-two, or thirty-eight, what, what would it take for them to get coverage?
Yeah. That would be a number that I'm sure I can generate for you. It will just take, take a little more time, obviously, than, than this evening.
Do you take into consideration, Mr. Miller, the fact, like, for example, a truck leaving out of station one can't cross over Mary Street?
There are structural hazards that we have in this city, and, and some of the big ones are going to be the culvert that runs under Piedmont. It's a very aged structure. I think, if I'm not mistaken, that they, they know, they take no trucks there. There is no truck that can cross the Mary Street Bridge due to weight limitations, things of that nature. We have some roads in this city that, to the simple turn radius, make it almost impossible for a ladder truck to get around. Now, all of these things come into play, and, you know, that's the fire chief's expertise, is, is all I can tell you, is that the numbers and the information that I have here are, they're just straight data.
So, so in other words, it's probably even more limited than what you're showing, or could be, in some cases?
Yes. This is a best-case scenario. And at, at the end of the day, the train is, for the most part, a very predictable mode of transportation. But once again, as equally predictable as it is, a fire isn't. So, you know, th- this is the data that I've generated based on what we have available in our own current 911 system now.
And again, Mr. Miller, it also doesn't take into consideration that heavy afternoon, Friday afternoon, Saturday afternoon, traffic flow patterns. I don't know, you know, in trying to get around in a fire truck around exits seven, it's from station three, in a ladder truck, it's not an easy task, because I do it. And any, any, any kind of movability in that, from exit five to exit seven especially, even on the west end, especially when the mall was going on, that was very tough. And even down here, like you said, in these downtown streets, Lawrence Avenue, back here behind Piedmont, there's cars parked side by side on that little narrow road. I'm telling you, we're gonna take off mirrors. If y'all live on that street, you better be moving your cars. We're gonna take off mirrors and stuff. I mean, because that's, I'm serious. The, the streets are very limited, of course. And, and you cannot do thirty-five, forty-five mile an hour down Lawrence Avenue or exit seven area on a Friday afternoon. So, again, this is just all big variables that we have no control over, like you have no control over. But this is part of this overall scheme.
Any, I guess, any additional questions?
That's an excellent, uh, display of what GIS is gonna do for the city. I appreciate your hard work.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council, we'd just like to, once again, thank you for giving us the opportunity to present you with some additional information. Hopefully, we were able to answer some additional questions or lingering questions that you may have had. The Bristol Local, the International Association of Firefighters, the Virginia Professional Firefighters, we view ourselves as partners in this challenge. If there are further resources or information that would be helpful for you, we're more than happy to partner with you, provide that, work with Chief Armstrong, so that he could get you the data or the information or long-term planning information that you need. And as I mentioned, you have a, a very difficult decision to make over where you can afford to cut, but more importantly, where you can't afford to cut. So I thank you all for your time. Thank you and good night.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Okay. Before we move to the next item, again, I would like to, to thank Mr. Wise, Mr. Brass, and Mr. Frantellis for coming and providing that information, and appreciate all the people that came out to listen to that as well. The next item on the agenda is matters to be presented by members of the public non-agenda items. And as I mentioned before, we will have the public hearing regarding the fiscal year eighteen budget next week, next Tuesday, May thirtieth, at six P.M. at the Virginia High School Auditorium, and would ask that you hold your comments about the budget until that time, so that we don't end up with multiple public hearings. But this time, we will go down the list of people that had signed up. First, and when you come up, for those of you that aren't familiar with this, come to the podium, please state your name and your address into the microphone so that we'll have it for the record for the minutes. You're limited to three minutes. The lights will kind of keep you on track. When you see the yellow light, you have thirty seconds left. When you see the red light, your three minutes are up, and we would encourage you to finish your sentence at that point. We do need to move on. It's, it's, we've been here quite a while and still have a couple of other items. I would also encourage you during your comments to be very respectful and to not make any kind of personal type comments. So with that being said, the first person would be Mr. Michael Pollard.
My name is Michael Pollard. I live at one oh one Ashley Drive. Gentlemen of the City Council, a lot of, a lot has been said recently, both here today and on social media, of the proposed cuts in the fire department. My comments are only tangentially related to the annual budget and go more to the city managerial structure. I do not intend these as personal comments against any individual, but more against the, more concerning the structure. I would like to remind the City Council that the city has a large number of departments, each with a department manager who is on full-time staff. These department managers report to the city manager, who is on full-time staff, and whose primary responsibility is the management of the department managers. The City Council members are part-time volunteers, every one of whom lives in the city, and most of whom have your own full-time jobs. You are not experts on fire protection, and you cannot simultaneously be experts on fire, law enforcement, jail management, road management, landfill management, golf course management, public housing, code enforcement, real estate law, tax law, public transit, public bonds, zoning, utilities, trash collection, building man, maintenance, so on and so forth, all in addition to your regular full-time jobs. Every department was asked to conduct a thorough budget analysis and to propose significant cost reductions. Some did this, and some did not, and some offered more reductions than others. The directive was not to reduce staffing, but to reduce costs, with the understanding that staffing is usually one of the greater costs. What the council did was to ask other communities of their staffing levels in certain departments, and to look into reports of normal staffing levels in those departments. And the council asked for those local departments to justify their numbers when significantly above national norms. The fire chief did not justify his numbers at fifty percent over typical levels. He did not reference NFPA recommended staffing levels. He did not reference NFPA recommended response levels. He did not explain why a response of nine firefighters was all he could manage with a current staff of forty-three. The council did not recommend cuts in fire staffing. The fire chief proposed a reduction in staffing from forty-five to thirty-three. The council did not recommend closing a fire station. The fire chief proposed closing a station. And the council did not recommend reducing total shift staffing to eight. That was from the fire chief and was not even mentioned in the City Council meetings. It is unfortunate that the information presented tonight was not provided last year when these discussions started, so that a working solution could be reached a long time ago. The chart that we saw tonight makes it seem like we need an additional two stations, even leaving the park areas alone, which we clearly cannot do even in the near future. I might offer a comparison. The police department was similarly challenged concerning staffing numbers, but the police chief offered justification of his current staffing levels, and the department was not only budgeted for existing staffing, but to fill another two positions immediately with another two possible later. I am not here giving personal opinions on the current managers of their job, or of their job performance, but simply pointing out that the council, council must necessarily...
Your time is up. No, I, I know you've got a lot to say, but we do need to move on. We've got other people coming.
If I may add one thing that's, I was going to close with, then?
No, Mr. Pollard, we, from here on out for the rest of this fiscal year, I can tell you why I sit here. Three minutes is three minutes. We've got a lot of people that want to speak, a lot of people that we need to hear from. And, and I appreciate you coming to, to these meetings, but we need to hear from everybody, and it's not fair, and we need to do this in an expeditious manner. And, and I do appreciate all of your comments, and you're more than welcome to share them with any of us after the meeting, but we do need to move on.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the list, Mr. Roger Mullins.
My name is Roger Mullins. I'm, I live at one fifteen Beach Knut Street, Johnson City, Tennessee. And I want to speak about Sugar Hollow Park. I discovered Sugar Hollow about four years ago by accident. And I walked down into the wetlands. I, I couldn't believe the treasure that Bristol has right here. You know, I, I go there twice a week. I'm off two days a week, and most of the time, I'm right there. Most time, I'll spend the whole day there. Take a lot of pictures, animals I've never seen before in my life, such as the wooden duck. You know, I was fascinated with this animal. And I've watched, year after year, how, you know, the duckweed moves in about the time these ducks come in. I'm just giving one example of animals there. They have something to eat all season long. In the fall, when the animals are ready, when the duck, when the ducks are ready to migrate out further south, the duckweed flows on out. Everything just works perfectly. Until TVA, the Army Corps of Engineers, built the tower. And as of this year, and still, still, things worked pretty good. Every now and then, it would flood a little more than normal, but still, there was no real disasters there until this year. It's now an ecological disaster. And again, I'm just speaking of one animal there. For the first time, these, these ducks are wild. The last two times I've been there, a mother duck and her ducklings have swam up to me, pretty much begging for food, because all their food's gone now. Because of these two floods, most of the ducks have left. There's three, there's three adults left, and there's the ducklings. And because the food supply is gone now, because of this extreme flooding, this last two times, it's gone. It's washed out. So they're trying to eat whatever they, whatever they have left. Those female ducks can't leave as long as they have the babies. Of course, the babies can't fly out. That's just one example. I don't mind the inconvenience of mud on the boardwalk. That always, it's always happened. You know, flooding's always taking place. It's a wetland. You expect flooding. But not this type of flooding. You know, even the campground was blocked off. People couldn't get out. Picnic tables were washed out in the picnic area. And again, to me, that's more of an inconvenience thing, even though it's, it, it does affect, it does affect Bristol financially, because, say, people in the campground, they can't get out, you know, they're probably hesitant to come back in the spring. But this is close to my heart. Like I said, I don't live here, but it's my passion. It's what I enjoy doing. And it just, it's close to my heart. And I'm, and Danny, and does a fantastic job, him and staff. I talked to Mr. McCullough a while ago, and, and he seems like he's really involved also, and I'm thankful for that. But thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Mullins. All right. Next on the list, Mr. Eric Ramey.
My name is Eric Ramey. I live at eight oh four Fairmount Avenue, here in Bristol. Mr. Mayor, to the council members, I have one ask of you. You all have become a YouTube sensation. I am a bi-vocational individual. I'm a pharmaceutical sales rep, and I pastor a church. And I'm very involved with wherever I go, and having conversations. And people will ask me, where are you from? And I'll say Bristol, Virginia. And we become the laughing stock of Southwest Virginia. It's humiliating, and it's embarrassing. And further, I want to ask that if you're gonna represent me and the citizens of Bristol, that you conduct yourselves as men, as businessmen, and stop the name-calling and all of the aggressive behaviors. I, I've witnessed on YouTube how you all belittle department heads and even our city manager, and you've talked down to them like they're kids. And I said, it's so embarrassing to witness this on public media. Furthermore, one of the council members asked, and I'm gonna go there, our chief of police, why is there so much section aid or public housing? As if he's, because he's a black man, he's supposed to know. And I'm going there with that, because that's embarrassing. It's, you're, you're fortunate that I have not, or many other citizens have not called for the NAACP to come and address that behavior because it's foul and it's out of order. So I, I would just like to ask...
That's enough. That's enough.
Why is it enough?
We don't deal with personal attacks.
It wasn't a personal attack. Unless, unless someone is guilty, unless, did it not happen? Did, did it happen? Let me ask you a question. Did it happen? Did it happen?
Again, we don't deal in personal attacks.
But let me ask you, sir, did it happen? Did someone say that on this committee? Tell me.
What does it matter? What does it matter?
Because I'm an African-American man who is a taxpayer, who is a taxpayer citizen, sir.
Get the NAACP to pursue us, but you've already called them down. And I'm, I mean, it's threatening to this council.
No, it's not threatening. It, no, no, sir. Listen, here it is. You represent me, and I'm supposed to sit back and tolerate that and think that it's good? And all the theatrics that go on, the play crying and all this nonsense? It's a joke. It really is a joke.
Why don't you run for council, sir?
If I had enough time, I would.
Oh, okay. Okay, okay.
If I had enough time, I would. And I'm very capable of doing it. See, you see how condescending you are, sir?
I don't care. I consider you threatening this, this body.
I'm not threatening.
Well, you just need to run for office, buddy.
You have any, you have anything else, Mr. Ramey?
No, I want to thank you for the job you've done well. And I want to thank you all for balancing the budget, because I understand that these cuts that are proposed weren't to balance the budget, that the budget was already balanced, but the cuts would be a surplus. So I don't understand the need of that. I mean, that doesn't make sense to me. And by the way, I am a business major, and I'm pretty educated, so I could probably help. So that's what I take offense to when you take young men and women who are working, they have families to provide for. And many of you all have done extremely well in your lives, because I know that for a fact. Your, your statement of economic interest really is impressive, but yet you have folks that make thirty-five thousand, thirty-six thousand dollars a year, and you want to cut their livelihood out. I mean, give them a chance to live and to make it, and to provide for their families as well. And all of the firemen don't make sixty thousand a year of the numbers that was stated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ramey. I appreciate your comments. Okay, next on the list, we have George Washington? Mr. Washington?
Good day, gentlemen.
Thanks, sir.
Former boss. I'm here for...
Can you stick your name and address, Mr. Washington?
My name is George H. Washington. I live at seven eleven Oakview Avenue.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. And I'm here for a reason. One, to support the firefighters, and to remember one thing, you know. I think I stayed awake in civics class, and I remember that municipalities is supposed to, you know, provide services, you know, police, fire, trash, and all that good stuff, and water, and good stuff like that. And, you know, and I think, you know, that taking away, I am a senior citizen. Yes, I am. I just, I just happen to take care of myself. But, but I'm here for that, too. But I'm also here for one thing, too. I live on Oakview Avenue. And it's a little street there called Birch Street, okay, between Oakview and Euclid Extension. The school buses come through there, the fire trucks come through there, ambulance come through there, okay? It's a hole there. Cars have been hit because people, you have to get on the wrong side of the street to get there. I've asked people, I've asked the workers, I've called down there. They will take care of it. I, I'm just asking that the hole get fixed, because I mean, it's, I mean, I know, that it can be done. They just paved a beautiful job on Martin Luther King Avenue, even up to Lee Highway. But I know they had a little bit of asphalt that they could have put in that hole. a little bit of asphalt that they could have put in that hole. Okay? That's all, that's all I'm asking for, because, you know, and it ruined your car, you know, you know, because you have to get your cars inspected, and then I'm, you know, I don't want to be paying for front and the left, okay? Thank you very much, councilman, you guys continue to do a good job, thank you, Mr. Crowder, good seeing you.
Very good. Can, Ms. Crowder, will you have someone, Public Works, looking? Thank you, Mr. Washington, I appreciate you pointing that out. Okay, that was everyone that had signed up, uh, if there is anyone else that would like to speak, uh, please, uh, we'll give you the opportunity, again, yes, come on up, again, just state your name, your address, in, in three minutes.
I'll probably just say what I want to say, so if it's okay, I would like to just sit here and talk to you, and I'll explain that this ability to you is part of what I say, but, my name is Eric Flanter, I live in Bristol, Tennessee, but I volunteered in Bristol, Virginia, I, I still volunteer there, I still volunteer there, and it's been over forty years. I was a firefighter for over thirty years in Bristol, Tennessee, I was a deputy chief there, and, and I also have a master's degree in business management, so I'm, I'm fairly versed in everything that we're talking about here. Uh, and I, I said all that to get to the point that I've seen statistics pro, I've seen statistics con, uh, you know, I, I think about things, and, and Mr. Mumpower, you and I have already talked about this, uh, I'm surprised that, that we're even here right now. But the truth of the matter is, one of our biggest line item budgets nationally is our military, and we're all proud of our military, maybe the only group that has a higher standard in police and fire, maybe, okay? But we hope we never use them, but we all know that the stronger they are, and the bigger they are, the better our country is, we all know that, okay? The one statistic that nobody mentions here is the human equation, okay, the human equation. What about the people that die? You could take some of that land at the falls, which is, which is not your fault, but you're gonna have that eight-hundred-and-twelve-dollar-a-year tax that you get from your primary income, your taxpayer, you're gonna have that gone, because you're gonna lose lives with this, whether it's firefighter lives, or citizens' lives, it's gonna happen, you're already shorthanded, as the statistics showed us, we still didn't take into effect the human equation. And, Mr. Flanter, I came here upset with your opinion toward this, and I apologize, because I'm glad to see that you, that you realized that. Mr. Mumpower, thanks for meeting with me, but I'm disappointed that you can't see that, okay? I'm in this wheelchair tonight, I had a, I had a heart attack, and I had a liver transplant, they're both fine now, I can't walk, because I don't have a back, because I fought fire and I volunteered with the lifesaving crew, and I didn't have enough help, I had to do the lifting with myself and my partner, and now my back is shot, okay? Research, okay, that's all a fact. If I had to do over, I'd do the same thing, because just like all these firefighters sitting here tonight, and all these police officers, that's what we do, and that's the human equation, and I'm sorry, but I'm very passionate about it, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your comments, Mr. Whitaker, and your service to our community. Um, is there anybody else that would like to, uh, make a comment? Okay, before we go into the, the next item, which is an executive session, I assume, uh, at that point, probably a lot of people will, 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 uh, go on home while we deal with that business, I would, again, remind people that there is a public hearing regarding the budget, uh, next Tuesday, May thirtieth, at six P.M. at Virginia High School, uh, it's an opportunity to speak on the budget, everybody will have three minutes, everybody that shows up will have an opportunity to speak. It may be a very long meeting, but if people come out, they should have the opportunity to speak. Based on, uh, the information heard tonight, should there be any discussion or changes to the budget, uh, we will let people know that, if, if we decide that there might be something between then, as well as if there would be changes after the public hearing, before the first reading, uh, of the budget ordinance. Uh, again, as long as those changes don't, uh, change the bottom-line numbers that were advertised in today's paper, there may, could be some, some changing, uh, within that, so, uh, but if there are, we will make sure to let people know that, uh, when they show up to the budget hearing. But I think tonight's discussion, I'll just say before we go, uh, I appreciate everyone that came out, I appreciate the presenters, I believe, uh, it's given us a, a lot of information, more to think about, there's al- always a lot to think about, and I will just say, uh, as Mr. Wise said, and that, that the firemen and others are praying for us, I, I greatly appreciate that and, uh, encourage that, so thank you. All right, with that said, we'll move to item number ten, executive session pursuant to section two-point-two-dash-three-seven-one-one-point-eight-seven, Code of Virginia, nineteen-fifty as amended, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Do I have a motion to enter into exec... All right, Mr. Flanter makes the motion.
Second.
Mr. Hubbard makes the second. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Flanter, Hubbard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes. Item number eleven, certify the executive session. Uh, by roll call vote, council members will certify that only business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements specified in the motion to convene the executive session or discuss. Clerk, please call the roll.
Flanter.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes. All right, no further business, we stand adjourned.